Welcome to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, Lompoc City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Bridge?
Here.
Mayor pro temp Victor Vega?
Here.
Mayor James Mosby?
Present. Please stand and join me in an invocation by Brian Haltermann and following your pledge of allegiance after that. Mr. Brady, as we step into this season of gratitude and reflection, may we all pause for just a moment of stillness. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, may each of us find opportunities to express appreciation to those who serve, those who lead, and those who quietly make life a little better every day. We want our first responders, members of our armed forces, educators, and all who give of themselves for the good of the community. Yet, let this also be a time not only to look back with thanks, but to look forward with hope. Hope for growth, for unity, for renewed possibilities. Pray that our city leaders, our mayor, council member, city manager, the chief of police and fire chief, be granted clarity, wisdom, and courage as they carry out their responsibilities. May they continually seek to widen the table of discussion, collaboration, and understanding so that Lompoc continues to be the uniquely strong and compassionate community we know it to be. We hold in our hearts tonight those who are facing struggles of every kind. May they find encouragement, support, needed resources, and a deep well of resilience from the care of others and from within themselves. And as we begin the meeting, may gratitude guide us, humility ground us, and hope lead us towards a future filled with possibilities. We are thankful for the privilege of calling this beautiful place home and for the opportunity to serve its people with integrity and vision. Amen. Show me the pledge of allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the one nation under our invincible with liberty and justice for all.
Ready for the big city manager report?
I am.
You grew a lot more hair today, Dean. What happened?
Thank you.
So we have our fire chief Brian Foman filling in for the city manager, Weyes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The annual Turkey Trot hosted by Parks and Rec is this Sunday, November twenty-third at River Park Fitness Trail. The event will include a kids' turkey dash and a three-mile fun run. Registration is thirty dollars for adults and twenty-five for children. Top overall winners will receive a turkey, with the second overall winner's receiving pies. With approaching Thanksgiving break, consider the Thanksgiving Break Day Camp at the Anderson Rec Center beginning next week, Wednesday through Thursday, with camp running from twelve-thirty to five-fifteen. The program will host ages six to twelve for forty-five dollars a child, and pre-registration is required. This year's Christmas parade will be held on Friday, December fifth, with this year's theme being a hometown Christmas, and we're looking forward to seeing all creative float entries. Library is hosting again their tiny art show. This popular event is returning for its fourth year. Residents of all ages are encouraged to visit the library and pick up their free tiny canvas. Submissions are to be returned to the library by November twenty-sixth, and these tiny works, tiny canvas works of art will be on display in the Grossman Gallery throughout December, and we're looking forward to seeing all the wonderful submissions from the Lompoc community. The popular decorated Christmas tree raffle is back at the library this year also, from November seventeenth through December twelfth. Raffle tickets can be purchased for one dollar each, or six for five. Raffle entries will enter the drawing to win one of many decorated trees on display at the library, and the drawings will be held on December twelfth and thirteenth, and you can see the library staff to purchase those tickets. We'd like to remind everyone that the holiday light exchange program is still open. Lompoc electric utility customers can visit City Hall during normal business hours to exchange up to five old holiday light strings for new LED lights. Residents must show a current City of Lompoc Utility Bill, photo ID, and their holiday lights. There's a great program with a lot of participation, so come and exchange early, please. We wanted to highlight the annual Holiday Lights and Decoration Contest put on by our Beautification and Appearance Commission. Nominations are open until the day of judging, which will be Tuesday, December sixteenth. Residents and business owners within the City of Lompoc City Limits hosting outdoor holiday decorations are welcome for nomination. Businesses will be judged separately. Winners will be chosen by the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission judges, and please reach out to the Beautification and Appearance Commission with nominations. Seasons of Hope here at the Fire Department, the largest community food and toy drive on the central coast, is again underway. Seasons of Hope provides toys and food to those in need during the holiday seasons. Donations can be dropped off at both fire stations located on South G and North D Street. Collections will continue until December twelfth. And lastly, a quick reminder that City Hall and other city facilities will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday next Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth, and we hope that everyone has a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving.
Any question for our acting city manager? I had five of them, but I will bring them on the end to make a final request that way. Didn't know you were going to be on the hot spot, but welcome. Public comment on consent calendar. We have three minutes. Five items on the consent calendar today. One is approval of minutes of October seventh, twenty twenty-five. Approval and ratification of expenditures for payroll of two million and forty thousand dollars. A voucher register October thirteenth through seventeenth for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand, and a voucher register October twentieth to twenty-fourth of a little more than two million dollars. Number three is introduction of ordinance number seventeen thirty-nine twenty-five, amending Title Fifteen of Lompoc Municipal Code to adopt and amend the latest editions of the California Building Standards Code in adopting findings of fact to support impositions of requirements other than those of the California Building Standards Code. And number four is adoption of a resolution, number six seven eight seven, print C twenty-five, authorizing destruction of obsolete city records. Number five, approval of First Amendment of long-term ground lease and operating agreement with conditional option for disposition and project development with Pale Blue Dot Ventures Incorporated relating to a proposed development of a space center project of approximately eighty-two acres of city-owned land, including adjacent to Cananda Park, APN zero nine five zero seven zero 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 eight. So those five items. I had one quick question with respect to the number three. Let me think. The chief could fill in for me, right? Where the battalion, your fire marshal's out right now?
Yes, I can.
I noticed that the changes primarily looked like they were never changes, but is there a way that you can get us a red line document? I know we have to have a second reading of this and...
Correct. So what we can do, and we spoke with Mr. Albro about that and our fire marshal, we'll provide a red line version for you before the December sixteenth public hearing. Our goal is to get that out to you by next week, so we'll ensure that's out there and we'll also post it on the city website.
Good deal. I appreciate that. Anything else? How about a motion? Where's you guys' motion buttons? You have more questions? Usually quick on that one. Trying to make a motion. I got a motion by Councilmember Vega, a second by Ball. Go ahead and vote. That passes five-zero. Moving on to a staff presentation. We have a presentation from the Lompoc Police Department on enforcement of the Lompoc Municipal Code, Chapter Eight Forty, camping and storage of personal property and public property in Lompoc Municipal Code, Chapter Twelve Point Eighteen, use of transit facilities, Resolution Number Six Seven Four Two, Print C twenty-five, camping and storage of personal property and city-owned properties outside city limits. There we go. Come on down.
Snuck up on you. Good evening, Mayor and council members, public and colleagues, my new city manager. I was asked to come in and talk with you about the Chapters Eight Point Four Zero, camping and storage of personal property on public property, as well as Chapter Twelve Point Eighteen, the use of transit facilities in the Resolution Sixteen, sorry, Sixty-seven Forty-two. And basically, my understanding of that is what you're, what I was asked to talk about is how we are using these. And did a quick check since the beginning of the year to current date. In our system, the way it's tabulated is through either homeless contact, homeless outreach, illegal camp, illegal homeless camping, and panhandling. We get an average of probably five or six of those every day from get-go, right off the bat. That's the first thing our patrol officers are handling, asking homeless to move on, and they don't tabulate the same way. So what I'm getting at is, the number I came up with for clearance is right around eight hundred and eighty contacts. But that's how those ones ended. A lot of them end in different, different ways, as far as maybe an arrest. We just contact, they move on, we provide them resources, and so forth. The, so the number is much higher, eight hundred and eighty, because we're doing four or five of them every morning from the get-go. The, I think the standard contact would, for an illegal camping site, would be going out to wherever that might be on public grounds, making the contact if there's somebody there. If there's not, we have the ability now through the two chapters mentioned earlier to leave notices, as long as they're not, their personal property's not in the way of things. Won't even notice. They have twenty-four hours. That notice gives them twenty-four hours to move their personal effects from that location. If it's a campsite, it's a forty-eight hour, we're talking, the first one is we're talking just a personal property, like a shopping cart or something like that. If they have an actual campsite set up, there's a forty-eight hour notice that's provided. If they're present, we provide that to them. If not, we put it in a conspicuous location. The officers are encouraged to take pictures of the, of the notice so that we can go back and say, yes, it was provided. And then after that, we can go ahead and go forward with removing it after the timeframe has passed. Any property that we, we collect, we store in a safe location for up to sixty days. The notices are, the notices provide information on how to get their, their property back, operating hours and locations and things like that. Anything that's not picked up within sixty days, subject to being disposed, disposed of, thrown out. And a lot of those contacts are easily handled. They clear on their own. We talk to them, they'll move on. If they are in a transit facility, a bus shelter, or a bench, or a bus stop, and it's taking up space, the officers can move that, that personal effects to the side, but not going to take it at that moment in time because it still has to have that twenty-four hour period before we can legally take it. And if they, if, that's if it's unattended. Otherwise, we ask the owner to take care of it, and they move on. The eight hundred and eighty contacts, that's just how those, those contacts ended. A lot of times, these are, these clear by different means. They can be through arrests for various things. We've, we've over, since March, I think it was, the, these ordinances went into effect. We've only issued three illegal camping citations in that timeframe, because normally they take care of it themselves. They'll, they'll move on on their own, or they're, they'll, they're not, they're not there, and we're, there's nobody to give a citation to. But we find other ways a lot of times just to take care of it. A lot of times, if there's any kind of enforcement action taken, we go through the state's penal code sections. It could be under the influence, or paraphernalia of drugs, possession of drugs, drunken public, warrants. And they, when we clear them that way, they don't tabulate the same way as some of these, this eight hundred and eighty that I was able to capture. So I'll open it up for questions from the council if there's any.
Councilmember Ball? So I'm just curious, again, this has been a complicated issue that's been facing our community for a long time. Been trying different things, but part of it is just learning about the issue and the makeup of the issue, I guess. So something I'm just curious about, and again, tiptoe into this if you have to, but as you're, as you or the department is meeting, making these contacts, I'm curious, roughly speaking, how many of these folks are reoccurring folks that you're meeting versus folks that the department's never seen before? The reason I ask that, and again, I know that's a little bit of a thing, is that there's always that perception that, you know, there's a big wave of people always coming to town. Maybe so, but I'm just asking.
Okay. I can only answer from my personal experience. When I started in two thousand, pretty much knew all the transients or homeless folks that we had at the time, because there was only a handful of them, right? Now, it's completely different. I challenge anybody to say otherwise. And we have our frequent flyers, people I know their names and date of births, right? But just as often, I'm running in, our officers now are running into people that are, you know, where'd you come from? How'd you get here? Why'd you come here? Why, why Lompoc? You know, we're, we're not on the one-on-one. We're not on the beaten path. And we get a variety of responses out of that. But yeah, there's a, there's a, there's a large influx of people that I've never, I've never met, you know, that are here now versus what I encountered when I started. So I don't know if that helps.
No, that, that helps a lot. Again, no politics here, but again, in terms of Lompoc, Lompoc alone can't deal with this issue. I think what I'm trying to get to is, and I think maybe there's a little bit of consensus at the council level, is that we alone in Lompoc City proper can't fix the homeless issue. We can't rely on your department alone to be social workers and helping everyone. But part of our understanding how we might even address the issue long-term is understanding, maybe are we being impacted by other parts of the county in a way that we don't know? So again, I, the reason I appreciate that honest answer is, that's something that I'm curious about as a council member. I'm, we're definitely facing an issue where there is more people, and I'm pretty sure it's happening everywhere. But I just want to make sure that Lompoc's not necessarily getting the short end of this in that a lot of people are migrating here for maybe a myriad of reasons. So again, I appreciate your answer.
Yeah, we, we get a lot of newcomers for a variety of reasons, and they get here in a variety of ways.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Anybody else? Miss, I've, I've experienced the enforcement making phone calls and say kudos, and I've had a number of people saying how much better the town is looking, so it's, it's working.
Appreciate it. I'll pass that on.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you need, do you guys need anything else on this? Does it work? I should ask that. What do you think? Is, is, are there enhancements you might need, some more, or what do you?
Yeah.
How deep is the pocket?
Yeah.
What was that?
How deep is the pocket?
How deep is the pocket? I'm joking.
Well, I mean, I'll just shoot from the hip, and he's going to watch him get nervous over here. I attended a Public Safety Commission meeting here recently. I believe you were in attendance when this discussion was had. And the, there's a perception by elected officials outside of this, this body here, in the county and above, that believe that the homeless population that we have are all Lompokians. They're all from Lompoc. And we challenged on that when we, when we asked the commissioners, they were told that in the census that this entity does, they consider those folks are from Lompoc. And yeah, from experience talking to the, that population, they're not from Lompoc. But that's, that's one of the things we're up against in the county and the state. Nobody wants to take responsibility for it, and so it's our problem now.
I ran into a guy from Alabama the other day. I thought you guys ran into him as well, but yeah, he was...
We've, we've moved, we've moved people across...
I'm one of them.
Yeah, we move people across country with the help of CityNet and other entities like that that were able to move people to Seattle and back east. And so, I mean, they're from, they're from a lot of different places, and everybody's doing, you know, that, so. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Ball has another question for you.
Just, just because I'm thinking about it, and Chief, you might jump in on this too. You mentioned a number, and again, it's like an eight hundred and eighty, that's the contacts. Point blank, what does success look like for your department a year out from now? Meaning, this has been put into action, this is, you know, how should we as a council look forward or, you know, hold you guys accountable to something over the course of a year? And what might that look like with your resources currently?
So with, with all that we've been doing in partnership with HR, it's looking like we should have five trainee officers going into the academy in January, which is going to be very helpful to us so we can refill those positions. We've already seen the success that we've had with the funding that the council gave us for the liaison positions. I think that's the key. When we can apply officers to focus just on that problem in connection with all of the resources from other areas, it really does make the community look better, and we're able to get people out of those environments that they're in. Is it ever going to go away? I don't believe so, but I think that we can significantly reduce what we're seeing in the community when we have full-time staffing to address it.
Thank you for that. I would just ask that if, if something's not working, or it's, you know, please keep a surprise as to what you need, what the department needs to stay functional in this area.
We will.
Thank you.
And that, that there be an understanding that those five officers is going to take five or six months to train in the academy, another four to five months to train on the field, so it's not going to get better in a year. So I, you know, it's, it's, you need patience for it, and in reality, that we're going to have to push forward through the next year without they have those bodies yet. It's, in the, in the, in the, the ordinances are just another tool and tool belt. They, they're effective. They're just something that we can throw out and use when we need it. Appreciate it.
Keep up the good work. I recently had two phone calls from two major businesses looking to relocate to Lompoc, and they're happy with what's going on, so keep up the good work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Oral communications. Now's your time. Three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Karen Howenstein, native of Lompoc. So I want to talk on this issue because the previous item. I have been watching very closely at the county level. When SB four-three went into effect last year in October, and Proposition One came in, our county is preparing to conserve people who are good candidates, who have mental problems, exacerbated by drugs, are not taking care of themselves on the street. I watched at a county budget hearing where they advocated and received three full-time positions at the county tax assessor and collector's office. Three full-time positions to manage conservatorships. That means that the county is planning on billing Medicare or whoever they can when they finally pull the trigger. Reason why I'm mentioning this today is because I became friends with Sonia Silva. Sonia Silva is a, an, a native of Lompoc. She was born here in nineteen ninety-one. She has severe mental issues that she had before she was ever drug addicted. And she didn't show up at a hearing on the sixth of November in Santa Maria, and at that time, I reported her as a missing person. She's now in custody at the Northern Branch Jail. From what I know of her situation, being a Lompoc native, she is citizen number one. She is from that demographic that we are supposed to be caring for, and she deserves to be conserved. She was communicating with me from Patton State Hospital earlier this year, and for the first time in her adult life, they mandated her to be forcibly medicated. And when she called me for that month's time, she was a normal person, starting to plan for her future, having conversations with me that were sentient. I am personally advocating for Sonia Silva, a citizen of Lompoc, and I want you to be aware, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Anybody else? Oral communications. Somebody else rise, we will close oral communications, move on to item number six. Council request, adoption of Resolution Six Seven Eight Eight, Print C twenty-five, establishing rules, regulations, policies, and fees for River Park Campground.
And Mayor, due to your ownership of property within five hundred feet of this River Park property, we talked about it, and you were going to recuse yourself due to the potential real property conflict of interest.
Yes, I am. So, Mayor Pro Temp, you're up. So I guess we're having a presentation from Mr. Mario Guerrero. Yes.
Hi. I need to go to the back to check on his presentation. I'm sorry. Can we just take a quick break?
Sure, sure. If you, everybody's okay with that? Let's take a five-minute break. How about that? Okay, if everybody's ready, we'll bring, bring it back to council here and for a presentation here for Mr. Mario Guerrero.
Good evening, council, the members of the public. Tonight, we have a presentation, the staff report for the River Park Campground, Resolution Establishing Rules, Regulations, Policies, and Fees for the Campground. For discussion tonight, just general policies, short-term camping, long-term camping, and our reservation process. General policies, reservations, our online reservations, we'll go over that later. And you can also register at the Anderson Recreation Center, Monday through Friday, from nine to five P.M. We will be removing the Iron Ranger that's out there at the campground, so everything will be done online or at the Anderson Recreation Center. Just some general policies. Our check-ins are at one P.M. and our checkouts at eleven A.M. It gives our staff some time during that to do some minor cleanup for the next campers that do come in. Our quiet time is ten P.M. till seven A.M., and all visitors, they must leave by the ten P.M. Tent camping is prohibited on-site. Fires are allowed in the provided fire rings only. Pets must be on, on leash or confined in a kennel. And we do allow alcohol, single-serving alcohol beverages out at the campsites, but no keg beer, for example. Short-term camping, we will have, when the project is finished, thirty-five... Short-term camping, we will have, when the project is finished, 35 full hookup sites, 30 amp and 50 amp. The fees will be $50 a day or $325 per continuous seven days, which consists of a camping unit and one vehicle. If you had an additional vehicle, it'd be $10 a day for the vehicle. Our max stay on our short-term camping is 21, the continuous days within a 28-day period, and the site occupancy is six people, including children. Long-term camping. So the campground intended will for guests, the desiring temporary lodging, the campground should not be claimed as a place of residence, or shall guests be considered a legal tenant. Guests using the campground shall waive all rights or eligible for, or shall, or not shell out any claim for benefits associated with local, state, or federal, or any other housing programs. Request for long-term site must be made in writing, submitting an application, park management, and accompanied by a letter describing what that need is, along with any others supporting documentation. Preference shall be given to out-of-town contractors with proof of short-term local employment. Application shall be approved by the community development director or designated. And, and then the, the long-term camping can be terminated at any time without cause. Same type of, of fee program, but we will have a maximum of 50% of the sites would be long-term. We do want to keep that, that recreational element and bringing people into town for the camp, uh, campsites. Again, it would be $325 per week. And also, we do make the, the long-term, the prepay, the four weeks in advance, and their maximum stay would be 52 continuous weeks, and they must be out at the campground for minimum of 14 days to, to reapply. Site occupancy is the same, and then we will also have a two-week deposit from long terms of $650. Again, being a long-term camper, that they must keep their sites orderly, clean, and light, and, and kind of be assigned to light landscaping things, so if there's any things out there that they need to do because of the, some of the long terms do put their own plants and stuff and try to make it a little bit more home-friendly. But any items determined by parks management shall be removed when requested, so any broken items, trash, litter, et cetera, then we would ask them to remove those. Well, we're real excited about our new reservation policy. Being online is going to allow people, and what, what our biggest complaint was before was it was first come, first served. So the people will call out of town and, how do I know that I can, that I get a spot? And we're like, well, you get to show up and, and if one's available. So it was kind of hard to bring people into town without having that availability to, to book your site. So on our city website, this is kind of, I'll walk you through a little process, but on our city website, we go to there, up on the left-hand side, it has the campground on the, on the left-hand side. You click that, it goes into our new reservation policy. I mean, to make a reservation. And then there's a map that kind of shows our campsites, and then if you hover your, your cursor over, it would tell you if the site was available or not. So it's an interactive map on the, on the, the little campers there. It's a little tight to try to get that in, but we will, we'll make that work. And then after you pick a site and hover, it gives you a confirmation of, of what you're booking. And then it goes into your area of the reservation, tells you about our reservation policies, verifying all your information. There's also a space that has for your, your trailers, the license plates numbers. So there would be, you can see a little bit, but down there, and then any, any other vehicles. So we would have that, that information. And then there's a checkout box up top on the right, and then you'd have your, your shopping cart there, with all the information, the waivers, everything then that you would have to go through. And then you'd check out your confirmation and have your receipt in case you're ever asked for it. But this allows our rangers and our park staff to be able to access this on their tablets or their phones. So we know, once we do our check-ins, then that, if that spot is reserved and all that, that information matches the person, then that's booking our, our, our spots. And, and then here's an aerial of the, of the, then the campsites. We're almost done, but it's, it's turning out as a great project. It matches our current nine, then we revamp, so these 26 will be up and running hopefully by the middle of December. And, but for sure, but by the first of the year. Just another picture that kind of shows how it is with the landscaping, our privacy walls, and the electricity. All the units are based to be on the concrete pads. We will be putting tables out there soon. They just showed up at the parks department, so we still have to build those, and we're, we're excited about that. And so staff's recommendation is for council to adopt Resolution Number 678825, Establishing Rules, Regulations, Policies, and Fees for the River Park Campground.
Uh, Mr. Guerrero, thank you so much. Okay, it looks like there's a great renovation going on on River Park to generate more revenue and provide better services to our public and to actually put Lompoc a little bit more on the map as far as people that want to stay here, whether it's to visit for wine or just to come over here and look at the murals. To recap with you here, it looks like, I'm going to read off the staff report, in 2022, the city renovated nine RV camping spots, as you mentioned. This is more for the public for clarification. It is currently renovating 26 new spots to open in December of 2025. So this resolution that we're speaking about is basically to update and establish new rules and regulations for the upgrades in order for the city to, fees to enhancing and govern the renovations and the campgrounds. So, so adopting this Resolution 6788, which I'll get back to the council in a minute, for the River Park Campground will provide a stable revenue stream for the park maintenance division and reduce the city general fund subsidy. So the other point that I wanted to point out here for the council is, under fiscal impact, which is probably everyone's concern, it says there is no fiscal impact to the biannual budget fiscal years for 2025 to 2027, and adopting the proposed River Park Campground Resolution. Increasing the rate for the renovated sites increases the potential revenue to the River Park Campground Fund. However, the 2025-2027 budget accounted for the renovations that were underway at the time, and the project increased revenue as a result. Any additional increases to the fee above the amount specified in Resolution 6788, parentheses, 25, would generate conservatively about $40,000 additional annual revenue for every $5 charged. That's a great thing. I mean, so I appreciate it. And I'd like to bring it back to the council, see if there's any questions for you, sir. So if the council has any questions, or Mr. Guerrero?
Councilmember Bridge?
Councilmember Bridge.
Uh, it's a great project. It looks like you guys have done a good job. The one issue I've heard about a few times now is that we'll call tourists trying to get in and the park's full. So that's a good thing, I guess. Is the 50% for the long-term contractors going to be 50% of the new sites as well?
Other than the total sites.
Of the total sites?
We don't want to go larger than that.
And do you have any feel for the vacancy rates that this will create?
Well, our goal is at least the 65% of the occupancy, I mean, in the summertime, it's going to go up, but trying to, keeping that 50% goal of the long-term, we'll keep that consistent revenue coming throughout the year.
And do you have any feel for the present vacancies in the summer?
I think once we do a lot of advertising and getting, getting that reservation policy out, I think it's going to enhance bringing people in, and I think that we're going to be a place to come, but also an affordable place to come. A lot of the rates around the surrounding areas go anywhere from $50 is us, all the way up to 160 to $200. So just to be able to come out and, and enjoy Lompoc and the surrounding areas for that price, I think our occupancy numbers are going to be.
I wasn't clear on my question. Do we know what our present summer vacancy rate is? What our present summer vacancy rate is? On the units we have today, are we full in the summer? Are we?
Since we've been, um, we've been under construction probably for about two years, and then because when we did the first nine, we, we had the mostly, the long-term, so we, we haven't really had a way to pace that since we haven't had this sort of reservation policy. So we've been in the past, that they're relying on our long-term versus just people coming in and recreating. So I think that the new reservation policy is going to enhance that since people are hesitant. I mean, I've never loaded up the trailer and just hoped I had a spot, so I think a lot of people now are going to be coming in and reserving, so that's our goal as staff.
And do you have any feel for what of long-term rental is at a local mobile home park? Like the one over by the high school, they have similar spaces?
Uh, no, I, I don't, don't know that in town. I wouldn't kind of put us in that same category, since we are temporary versus that's more of a long-term.
52 weeks in a year is not very temporary. They go on a two-week vacation and come back and get another 52 weeks. That's.
And that's max. Sometimes we see four months, the six months, so it kind of depends on their, the situation, or if people are buying houses or come in and there's a down period and they have to come in for a couple of months. It's an alternative for them to be able to do that.
Okay. Well, I would, I, I'm not sure whether I get council concurrence, but about this time next year, I would be very interested in what the summer looked like. Because as I started out, that's the one item people have brought to my attention, that they have relatives coming to visit, et cetera, and they can't get in the park. So if I could get, I guess, I don't know if that gets incorporated in the motion or just that little piece can just be a council concurrence?
It could be either.
I have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ball.
Uh, so thank you for the presentation. Again, I, I remember when Dean brought this up a couple of years ago, I was brand-new, and it really excited me because the whole idea was, hey, let's invest some money, let's take this stress off the general fund, always having to help and, you know, subsidize that park, let's turn it into a revenue generator, which I think that's, you guys have been pushing towards that. So whether it's the summer, you know, vacancy rate, or it's just the general numbers, or it's how much revenue are we seeing at the end of a year from now when we're fully open versus what they told me two or three years ago they were making per year? That's potentially really good news for us. Not only do we have an upgraded park, an updated park, a place where people can come on Highway 1 and, you know, camp at a good rate, but it can help our city by taking off some of the pressures. So we could use some of the general fund dollars to do some other good work, right? So again, please take as, keep as much track of all of those numbers as possible. And the sooner that we get an update, as soon as things get open, maybe three months after you're open, maybe just give us an update on, you know, how's it looking? Are we, are we behind in what our projections are? Are we ahead? That'd be all, all be helpful. And I, I mean, I think the staff recommendation, the numbers, those all seem to make sense for me. I think if we push the price up too much, it might push some people away too, but that's my only other comments.
Yeah, and definitely, and in the, the last budget, that there was some CIP money for future expansion in the front of the park, so then that will be something that that will be coming back to council is, with that revenue still enhancing that and building, building more spots so we can generate the more revenue in the future.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Starbuck.
One of the things I don't see on here, Mario, is tent camping. We had a tent camping area, and now we're going to delete that? That's gone?
Yeah, we, we, we had a lot of issues with tent camping, a lot of, we don't have constant security out there as other secured RV spots or lakes that have the 24-hour, the security. So being in those RVs and being able to lock them into the security, as of right now, we eliminated tent camping with our future expansion, that that might be an opportunity for us to bring that back.
I was going to say, because I remember years ago, there used to be groups of bikes would show up here. It was a stop for them. They had it on their little map, and then they were turned away and forced to come into town, you know, for a hotel. Well, still a win-win for the city, but a discomfort and expense for the people that had pre-planned tours here. It seemed like it was working out there, so consider that later, please.
Okay. Public comment first, and then we bring it back to council for motion. So if you guys are done, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comment. Mario, thank you so much. Okay, appreciate it. So we're open now for public comment. You have three minutes, once you come up here, so now's your time. I don't see anybody stepping up, and I don't hear anybody calling, so I'm going to bring it back to council and see what we're going to go with the motion. Are you proposing a motion?
Yes.
I can't see anything here, so.
It's up there.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'd like to propose a motion that we approve a staff's recommendation with the understanding that we would get an update on this. And the only reason I picked the next fall was to get a full summer season in so we could see what happens in the summer, which is what I think would be critical.
I second that.
You second it?
Councilmember Bridge, did you want that in 12 months from this month or 12 months from when it opens up? Is it open?
Well, I was thinking next fall, so.
November.
November, December timeframe.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second here to approve the adoption of Resolution 6788, parentheses, 25, Establishing Rules, Regulations, Policies, and Fees for River, River Park Campground with the addition of an update within 12 months or so, right in there, okay? So if that's okay, let's go ahead and vote. Thank you. Thank you, we can bring the mayor back. Thank you. We can bring the mayor back. All right. Item number seven, amendments to general plans. Airport land use compatibility plan, right?
Correct.
Okay, fire away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So this item went before you a couple of times already, back in September and October. There were items that were mentioned by various council members that had issues with the adopted airport land use compatibility plan. So staff has provided three options to consider. Option number one is to approve the amendments to the general plan and zoning code for consistency with the adopted Land, Lompoc Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. Option two, initiate the process for overruling the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan by providing staff a list of detailed disagreements with any provision of the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, which staff will then notify the Airport Land Use Commission of the city's proposed action. And then item, option three, is to provide staff a list of detailed disagreements with any provision of the plan, which staff will then work with SB CAG and the Airport Land Use Commission to amend the adopted Lompoc Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. And that concludes my presentation.
You don't have any pretty slides for us or anything?
I'm sorry, say that again?
You don't have any pretty slides for us or anything here?
Um, I guess not. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah. So the data that was gathered for this plan, and obviously nobody from SB CAG came. I invited them last month just to come. I see that nobody made it up to the colonies of Lompoc for that. But when this data was gathered, who, where did it come from?
Well, my understanding is some of it came from our unadopted plan from 2011. And some of the data within that came from FAA.
Came from SB CAG?
No, came from the.
FFA?
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Okay. Or FAA. I think actually some of it might have come from the FFA. Yeah, it was, my curiosity is, why do we have to adopt anything? What happens if we don't adopt anything?
Well, yeah, so if we, if we don't make these consistency findings, the kind of initial, I guess, consequence would be that any land use decision would have to go before the Airport Land Use Commission prior to us going, let's say, before Planning Commission or City Council.
So if we adopt it, doesn't it still have to go in front of them?
If we, no, if we adopt it, then we can be the authority. I think the only exception would be, for example, general plan element changes to the general plan map.
Some of the questions that I have in here, of course, there's other documents that back up this document. We don't quite have everything here. If you go look at the SB CAG document and drill into that, you will see that there's significant impacts to our community that weren't identified in the document. Usually when they're doing something, it'll tell you positive or negative impacts that they're going through here. And one of the curiosities, and it was Councilmember Bridge, I think, brought it up a little bit last time, that they were referencing that we have 30,000 takeoff and landings. And in four years, that's going to 60,000. And I don't think anybody in town who knows our airport thinks that number is not off by a magnitude of. Yeah, 10. You know, it's more like 3,000. So the curiosity that I have, and that's why I asked the question about who came up with these numbers? And yet, we talked earlier and you showed me that there was an FAA filing, but I don't know who filed that one way back when. But everything that's in here in itself is, the pretty colored maps that we have is predicated on numbers I think that are completely wrong. And I tried to find out if there was a source of better numbers. And I guess there isn't a better source of numbers. So I don't know how they came up with the number. I think anybody can watch out there and see that that's not happening. We don't have, there was that 80-some-odd trips a day and we're gonna go to 160 trips a day? It just doesn't happen in our little airport. So I think a lot of what's in here is completely incorrect. It's not your report. I know you're just the messenger. I get it.
Yeah, the adopted airport land use compatibility.
Yeah, and so I'm just very concerned that we have a document that has significant impacts in here. Like if you look in here, our recreation fields and some, the new ones would be in Zone 2 and the old ones are in Zone 3. And it starts limiting us how many people per acre. I think we're down to 50 people per acre. It's kind of hard to have a soccer field with only 50 people per acre. So I think there's significant impacts that are in here. That number one, unless you go and extrapolate all the documents together, you won't see this. But should be identified in here, saying, hey, this is what's gonna happen. A lot of the land south of the airport also has restrictions because of the sound. And the sound is also predicated on the 30,000 trips that we have coming at our airport, which isn't happening. So I know there's a question in there somewhere for you, but I mean, it seems like you're as bewildered about this as I am when we were talking. But is, what are some of the alternatives that we can do here?
Well, one option, as I indicated at the beginning, is to just work with SB CAG to see if we can just amend the document to begin with.
Okay, so if we amend the copy, it still doesn't amend the sound limits and the safety limits? If we, in fact, you know, the calculations they did, I guess, can we ask for them? And throw out what they got and ask them to redo it?
I can, I can reach out to SB CAG and see what can be done, you know? Or how it can be amended, how the document can be amended to reflect potentially correct numbers or alternate numbers and see if that would affect some of the graphs. I would just have to work with them.
Because I think if you have such material errors like this, I think you're, it's beyond amendment. This is more like a redo. So I'd love to get some of the council member questions and then, Councilmember Bridge?
I've had concern with this document from day one, so there's no surprise here. I just want to make sure I understood the three options that you think are available to us. We can say we're not gonna comply, we don't like it, we're not gonna do anything. We can send back a request to SB CAG that says we will comply with this, but we think we won't comply with this piece or we need some attribution on this piece. Or the third option, and I'm not sure if you said it, I'm sorry, I tried to listen, but. I think the third option from my research says we can send it back to the agency responsible and say that the data within the report is inaccurate and the document needs to be redone before we can consider it and we can point to known discrepancies. So is that three options? I heard you say we have.
Yeah, well, the first option is to approve the consistency. Yeah, and then, yes, the second option would be the overruling, which has, as outlined in the staff report, has procedural steps to that. And then the third option is really just to work with SB CAG and see if we can amend the document. But in either option, two or three, I'll need direction from City Council, which way to go. And I'll need specific items of concern so that I can bring it to them to.
Okay, well, I have written a letter to the staff. I can make a presentation of what the considered concerns are. But basically, the 30,000 estimate, well, it's not actually an estimate. It's a report from FAA on the 5220 report that has not been updated since 2022, was the original baseline with going to 60,000. And the estimate was made by SB CAG, not by FAA, to the 60,000. Back when they made that estimate, I'm sure they made it in good faith. But we've now had 10 or 15 years that 30,000 has been what it is. It was for 20 years previous, it was 30,000. We know that we're not gonna grow maybe 10% in the next four years. So I think we can, with some justification, say that the data in the report is inaccurate. And what it impacts, areas of concern, are four of the six land use requirements that are stipulated in that. I don't think the overflight changes, because the planes go where they go, whether there's 30,000 of them or 60,000. And there might be some conversation about whether it's appropriate to notify Mission Hills that there's planes coming out of the airport, independent of that. But the noise and the risk and the other two, I can't remember what they are exactly, impact those curves. And those curves establish the land use restrictions. And of the two that are a particular concern, at least to me, is the noise. To tell the folks in our industrial section that they have to go spend a bunch of money to get five decibels down, which is like from a whisper, from a regular city street to a whisper. And the other is the risk one, which essentially will cover pale blue dot, which we just extended.
Oh, the safety?
The safety, thank you. And that's got a component in that's go prove a negative. You can do it if you can't do it anywhere else. Well, there's just absolutely no way to prove that. So not only is the study flawed, the requirements are unmeatable. So I would make a motion, we need public comment probably.
Councilmember Ball.
So this should come as no surprise to somebody, but I actually completely agree in a very general sense. I think that anything, anywhere that limits Lompoc's ability to be competitive, whether it's in its future, its vision-making, it's all of those things, it's impacted by some of these decisions. So worst case for me, there's not 30,000 flights, six, there's maybe four or five a day. You can wave at the same pilots every day. It's a few people going around. Well, let's play that through. If somebody out there got to say, well, there's an arbitrary number that we attribute to Lompoc and let's base all of our land use decisions, growth potential, et cetera, on this arbitrary number and let's just check the box there, well, they get to restrict our ability to be competitive as a community with our neighbors that are growing and are having opportunities. So I guess from my perspective, yes, let's toss it right back. I'd love to get some updated, I'd love to know that this governing body, SB CAG, is looking at some sort of rational numbers from our city. Otherwise, we're agreeing with something that's, everyone in this room knows is nowhere close to accurate. So again, I'd just love to get a little bit of clarity and to know that they're playing fair with this type of decision. Otherwise, we're just saying, yeah, we'll go along with something. But we're going along with something that you and I know is not perhaps quite as accurate as it could be. So I don't know, whatever we can do to get some clarity and some realism injected into the, to the numbers that they're making some of these decisions off of. Again, politics aside, I think that's fair to us. So I don't know if that's enough direction. I think he gave you a lot of specifics. But for me in general, if you see a number that's like, gosh, that's, that makes no sense for here, I'd love to know about that and I'd love for us to push back as the city.
No, if you're as flabbergasted as I am, I'm not amused how to drill down with that number. So let me open to public comment and then we'll, do you guys have any more questions? No? We'll make it to public comment, then we'll bring it back to deliberations. Any public comment on this matter? You guys commuted today. Did you guys fly in on this grade of 30,000? Yeah, you saw it happening out here, huh? Yeah. All right, senior public comment, close public comment, bring it back to the council. I, there's some significant direction that we need to take so if the city attorney could step in, because I think there's other avenues and areas. I know you touched on a couple of things, but again, as was mentioned with the pale blue dot. If somebody and anybody can argue and say, yeah, there's another place you could put it, you could go put it in Santa Maria. Well, guess what? There is an alternative, of course, of the conditional approval of that. So I think that's significant. I think it's significant with our soccer fields. And you say, yeah, we're grandfathered in, but for safety and for airport safety, they could actually probably close our soccer fields down with the way it's drawn up and written. It definitely stops us from expanding. So I think that is significant as well. And I think there's in the line of enough significant issues with numbers that granted, we believe to be incorrect. Maybe the city attorney can advise us, what can we do to? Can we kick it back to them and say, hey, straighten it out, give us another report or what can we do?
Yeah, I think I wanted to make the point that in the option three, we just go back to the SB CAG and ask and tell them, there are some significant incorrect assumptions in this report, in this plan. Can we talk about amending it to make the plan right? And then talk with them about if we do make, if SB CAG does amend the plan to make it factually correct and based on the correct assumptions, what changes will happen to the regulations that are then in the plan? How will it change the contours and the maps and the number of people per acre requirements and things like that? And we can come back to the council with that information. I wanted to make the point, though, that it's not just, it doesn't necessarily just mean asking SB CAG to amend the plan, but it could also be asking SB CAG to do a complete redo of the plan, which may be what needs to be done. But that option three, staff could, as an initial step, take the council's concerns to SB CAG and say, hey, is there an amendment that can be done here? Or maybe we need to redo the whole plan because it's based on incorrect assumptions.
Let me get, Councilmember Bridge, I'll come to you. Councilmember Bridge?
Well, I'm ready to make a motion if you want to say something.
I just had one quick follow-up question with the city attorney and then I'd love to hear that motion. Just out of curiosity, educate me a little bit. In the event that, let's, let's say hypothetically, SB CAG, that body blows us off, they say, nah, it is what it is, that's, we're going with these numbers. What legal recourse might we as a city have to insist that we don't have undue regulation placed upon us because of the unfairness of some of that? Is there options there?
At that point, we would have the ability to go through the procedure to disagree, formally disagree with the ALUCP plan that SB CAG adopted. And that is in page five of the staff report. We would make the required findings to show that the plan is based on incorrect assumptions and that we can still meet the state's noise and safety guidelines by using what we want to put in our general plan and not what SB CAG is putting into their airport land use plan for us. And with a two-thirds vote of the city council, we can disagree with the SB CAG's plan. And we can keep our general plan as it is. Of course, we can be challenged on those findings, but that is the route that we can take if they just ignore us.
Thank you for the clarity. Appreciate it.
I just have a follow-up to that. I just have a follow-up to that. When we send it back to SB CAG, which I think we're on a path to do one way or the other, if we tell them that our, if we say, I'm sending it back, that we have found or have made a finding that the data is inaccurate, that they're basing their assumptions on, does that automatically put you in that option? Or do they still have the ability to find a way through this?
Well, with the option three that Greg was proposing or proposed, that's more of just an informal conversation option, where Greg will go to SB CAG and say, hey, there's some things that are incorrect here, can we, can we just change the plan? Because will you guys admit that the plan needs to be changed? It's like an informal option. That would not be officially starting the process of disagreeing with SB CAG. When, if you wanted to take that initial informal step, and Greg would come back to you and tell you what SB CAG's response was, or reaction was, and then you could decide, do you want to start the formal process to disagree with SB CAG? That would be, that would be, that would be sending a formal letter to SB CAG saying, here are the reasons that we have decided that we're not going to do anything in response to your ALUCP. And then SB CAG would have 60 days to tell us whether or not they agree with that, and then we hold our public hearing to.
So if we take the option of informally going back, are we in some kind of delinquency or non-compliance string? Because they could take a year to come back in that.
We already are past the official state law deadline to change our general plan to make it consistent with the SB CAG's plan. So at any moment, SB CAG could flip the switch and say, from now on, all land use decisions that come to Lompoc have to go to SB CAG first for them to consider whether they comply with the ALUCP. They haven't flipped that switch yet, and I don't think they will if Greg goes to them in good faith to talk about potential incorrect facts in the plan. But yes, that is what they could, that's the limbo that we're in.
Can we as a council direct that we take that approach, not the formal with the informal, but request that it be put in writing, so it's not he said, she said, three months from now?
Sorry, which request do you want to be put in?
So we want to go back and work with SB CAG, we want to be good community members. But can we as a council request that that communication be in writing, at least on our side, so that it's well documented and not, well, we never heard you say that, or?
Yes, you can, you can give that direction to our staff.
It'd probably be initially through emails, but that's written, so.
I just want something, my experience in working in the arena numbers, if I didn't put things in strong, clear writing, I would get blown off. They would then act like they'd never heard it before, and I think that was the same organization, SB CAG. And it was only when I put it in writing that they had a fatal flaw in their numbers, that they finally reduced Lompoc's numbers. Up till then, they pretended like I didn't know what I was talking about. Once it went in writing, they had no choice, they could no longer just wave their hands at it. This looks a lot to me like the same kind of condition. They've come out with something, it's got fatal flaw in it as far as I'm concerned, and unless we nail their feet to the ground, they're liable to say, no, you're just wrong. I'm sorry, that's just my mindset. So I'll make a motion that we go back to SB CAG. We document the findings that the mayor outlined and that I outlined. And if you need clarity on that, I think I've written mine up. But we put it in writing.
So option three, correct?
I believe that's your option three. But I want, my recommendation and part of my motion is that it would be in writing when we do this negotiation. That's my motion.
You know, what part of option three did you have?
We're going back in good faith and act as a community member and try to work with SB CAG to get it corrected, but we do it in a manner of writing. You know, you could repeat it as you stated it if you want.
So you're not, it has nothing to do with the resolution that's in here, correct?
No, I don't think, I'm not passing the resolution.
No, I agree, that's what I was going to ask, is you made a statement about the resolution.
I'm sorry.
You're all right, I just, you made a statement about the resolution that allowed us to stay in that limbo area and asking them to correct what we felt was correct, but where, where the resolution was that allowed?
No, that's not in the resolution. The resolution only deals with the finding of consistency. So this is, this is just, this is not in the resolution, this is option three.
Resolution's option one, correct?
Yes, resolution is option one.
You had different numbers.
Well, I don't think, those aren't the options. That's just he outlined in the beginning of the staff. In fact, I don't know that the options were.
Those are the recommendations.
I wrote my options down here, so.
This is not in the staff report, only option one's in the staff report, so I, that's what I thought.
Okay. Can the city attorney explain a little bit more about his motion? Where's that put us?
Yeah, and I guess apologies from staff that these options are not in the staff report. But these are three options that Greg presented in his verbal staff report today. The one is just to do, adopt the resolution that's in the staff report. The second one is to start the formal disagreement process with SB CAG. And the third option is kind of a first step informal option, where we go to SB CAG and we try to informally start a discussion or make a request, let them know, hey, there's some obvious factual, incorrect factual assumptions in this plan that you adopted, so we don't think it makes sense for us to just go ahead and follow this plan. Can you make some amendments to the plan to correct those assumptions? Or maybe it needs to be completely redone? And then if we do that, what are the changes in the regulations going to be that come out of that? What's the differences in the contour maps, noise maps, and the decibel levels, and the densities and all that? And then we'll see what SB CAG's reaction is, and we'll bring that back to the city council, let you know, and then you take the next step from there, whether you want to continue down that road with amending, asking SB CAG to amend the ALUCP and see what they, basically work with them on the amendment or the redo? Or at that point, do you want to start the formal process to disagree with the plan?
And I will tell you, based on my research, there is absolutely no way they can not, not amend the curves if they admit that the level is 30,000, not 60,000. And they have absolutely no data to document 60,000. So just for data.
I don't think they have anything that really brings up the 30,000, so. Okay, you have a?
Well, they do, they have a 2021 or two report put in by our airport.
Correct.
To FAA that documented the 30,000. I don't know who's exactly 30,000.
And I went back to see where that number came from, and it was like.
Yeah.
Hocus pocus, okay. All right, so we have a, any more questions? Counselor Ball, yes?
Just a quick question, and again, I'm assuming this is probably already happening, so forgive me if I'm asking something that already will happen. This is important to council, obviously, trying to get this one right. So I'd love, just because we're kind of semi-formalizing this, putting it in writing, city attorney, I'd love for you to stay aligned and engaged from the get-go here so that you can start projecting whether or not we have to shift to a more legal tone, a harsh tone. That way, it's not kind of just going around city hall, we don't have a plan to address whatever the reaction they have based on our pushback.
I will be sure to do that.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, we had Bridge first and Ball second, and you understood all, everything, right? City attorney? Yeah, okay. All right, go ahead, Book. That's a 5-0. Got a busy airport, we didn't even know, what do you think? Going up to 60,000 visits a year.
Mayor, I have a question, if I could, please.
Yeah?
I have a question before we go to the next item.
All right, go ahead, what you got?
You know, the way we went back and forth here, I had my light on for a while, and I was called. And I wanted to explain that us going back and forth was pretty confusing, you know what I mean? The clarification of what the actual motion was for the public, you know, I would have liked to see a little bit more clear, but I'm okay with where we went. But to go back and forth and get confused on option three, you know, and then go back to SB CAG, but we're not really amending or approving anything for clarity for the public. I don't know if anybody was able to follow that, you know? But anyway, just for clarification, okay?
All right. Well, you had it on, you turned it off, I figured you were just.
Whatever the excuse was.
All right, I'll make, I'll call on you even if it's not on. All right, new business. Discussion and direction regarding a potential ballot measure for special transaction and use tax to increase funding for roads in right-of-way minutes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Could you imagine if you were off by a magnitude of 10? We'd get through a county very well on that, would you?
It's what makes up my nightmares. Good evening, council, mayor, members of the public and city staff. Thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to first wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope that you have a joyous and fulfilling time with your families. I don't think we're going to have a chance to see each other before that again, so just want to say happy Thanksgiving. Tonight, we are going to be presenting a comprehensive overview of some detailed factors that should be considered in evaluating a potential ballot measure for a new transaction and use tax. There are several components to this topic, and so I just want to go over what we are going to be covering tonight. First, we're going to review the need. What roadway projects and maintenance needs do we have? Second, we're going to talk about the revenue requirements needed for roadway projects and maintenance, and some of the recent changes that have significantly impacted the right-of-way maintenance revenues. Then we're going to talk about a transaction use tax and the analysis of that, what it is, why we as staff believe it's a good option, and what are some of the limitations or parameters that we need to address? And then we're going to turn it over for discussion and recommendations of next steps. Tonight, I just am really, I'd say proud. It was a real collaborative effort by three department heads and our consultants with Urban Futures to put this presentation together. You know me, I'm the management services director. Was Craig Dearling was our, our public works director, was a big contributor to this, and Jeff Malavi, our city attorney. And we worked with Urban Futures, you may recognize Wing C. Fox and James Morris from Urban Futures. They worked with us on the successor agency bond refunding, as well as the 10-year general fund forecast. This is a multifaceted proposition, so we're each going to be presenting together, and we're going to kind of set, paint the picture and set a foundation for what we are going to be evaluating. So the first, first person up is Craig, talking about our roadway projects and maintenance needs.
All right, so to start off, if I need to click, so. I'll just turn a few more things up. There we go. So my point with this slide is to show a broad range of funding needs we have for road funds. And we categorize all of those into two primary categories, one being citywide operations and the other being capital projects. Citywide operations are the ongoing routine, sometimes daily activities like patching potholes, addressing trip hazards, trimming trees, dealing with vegetation, clearing drainage, things like that, that just keep things running. So they don't always extend the useful life or reconfigure our roadway infrastructure, but they keep it working for us on a daily basis. Capital projects, in contrast, are for the purpose of extending the useful life or reconfiguring or installing something new, so they're more expensive by unit cost, they're location-specific and constrained in schedule. And to visually depict those, oh, it looks like I didn't finish the lines there. Anyway, here's a few pictures depicting operations primarily on the left side and capital projects primarily on the right side. Just kind of showing the expensive nature of the capital and the ongoing need of the operations. And we need both to really meet the city's roadway needs. On this slide, the statement on the right is our first message, the city's most costly need for its limited roadway funding is pavement maintenance. And then the second message is, when evaluating roadway condition, this pavement condition index system reports distress severity, so how bad the distress is, and prevalence, how widespread it is. So this, I know these pictures are a little familiar. Top left, the distress shown is not very severe or prevalent, and then bottom right, it's both severe and prevalent. See if I can advance this, there we go. And then this one shows different expenditure scenarios for only cost-effective capital pavement projects. The top line being a 3.5 million per year expenditure scenario, growing from our approximate present, present average PCI, which is 53-ish, up to nearly 70 in a period of about 10 years. The green line being a 2 million per year scenario, which is mostly leveled, barely increasing the next line below that, being a one and a half million per year. So based on the budget reduction that Christie will discuss, this is basically where we're at, with status quo, a slightly declining line. And then the red line is if we didn't spend anything. So I'll pass it back to Christie for the next phase.
Could I ask a quick question before you leave that slide? Could you go, could you go back one slide, please? So you said there were two types of maintenance levels required for, one was maintenance and one was capital.
Right.
Is this chart just capital, or does it include the maintenance?
It's just one type of capital, really. So this is one piece of our capital picture. This is only cost-effective pavement rehabilitation.
So there are other components that are millions of dollars.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so now we got to talk about the money. So our row maintenance revenue has recently changed. There is a. a court decision, Rogers versus City of Redlands, that we became aware of in June, or the court decision was in June, that basically precludes the city from charging the enterprise surface level vehicle use of city streets and, and right-of-way maintenance. So what we have done up until now is we have had our enterprise reimbursement funds, and those have included surface level, subsurface, and direct costs that the utilities have paid into both the general fund and into the row maintenance. What this has done is said that we cannot, that this, that this court decision is not going to allow us to charge the utilities' surface level vehicle use for streets and row. And the legal evaluation has said that that does impact our enterprise funds. Now, the analysis is here, and this is where I get into the nitty-gritty with the numbers. On the left, you can see, this was what we adopted in the budget. This was before we knew the impact of the court decision. And the area that is being, the two enterprises that are being most impacted are solid waste and transit. In fact, there are the, other than $249 next fiscal year in electric, it is all in solid waste and transit that has the surface level impacts. And you can see that there was a total of 807, 982, and 607, 360 in this fiscal year, and then next fiscal year that was increased, and that was where we had frozen it. Taking those out, because it was, taking those surface, the surface level pieces out of, from solid waste and transit, we're going to have, instead of a 3.4 million ongoing revenue to row, we are going to now have a 1.76 ongoing revenue to row. So that's a decrease of 1.67 million dollars.
Before you leave that start, I have a couple of questions, if I might?
Absolutely. We can, we can do that, or can we come back and do questions when we've done the whole thing?
I probably won't remember them.
Oh, okay.
Any questions?
Okay, go ahead.
So essentially, we're saying the general fund will be impacted by this amount of money?
It isn't general fund, it's the 236, which is our row, our right-of-way maintenance fund.
Where, and that fund goes into the road?
It's what we use to do the pavement improvement projects.
And explain to me again why the wastewater and water are not...
So wastewater and water are subsurface impacts to the roads, and so we have to dig under, under the surface level. And so according to the original report that we, we base the enterprise reimbursement funds on, certain, certain funds were being, were charged out, allocated based upon subsurface, and, and solid waste and transit were based upon surface, having to do basically with the, the fact that the compactors and the collection vehicles are out on the roads. And so that was why they were being charged, and the buses out on the roads. And what this court decision has basically said was that because they are public roads, we can't charge for their, the impact on them.
So solid waste and transit has within their budget for '25, '26, and '26 and ' '27, those costs incorporated in our rate calculations?
That is correct. And if I, if I can take it a step further, we are actually in the middle of a solid waste cost of service study right now, so that we can see what the impact is of these expenses being eliminated. What we have also found is that the last two years, solid waste has not performed the way that we anticipated, and so we're doing an evaluation as to why that is. And we are also looking at the, at the financing of, of the big project out there, the stormwater remediation project. And so that financing is, is going to be coming back to you in the next couple of months. And so all of that together was why we had started, already started a solid waste rate study. This information is now being incorporated into that study.
Okay, thank you. Councilor, what?
So I'm gonna ask kind of a silly question, just clarify for me. So how should I ask this? Just lost my train of thought. I was thinking so hard about it. What were we just speaking about? Let me think, let me think for a second here. Oh, that's it, okay. Layman's question, solid waste and transit. There's two years there, right? And then in '25, '26, '26, '27. So in '25, '26, between those two, what's that, 1.4 in '25, '26 and...
These two right here?
Uh, just on the left-hand side. Yeah, so that's roughly 1.4.
It's this number right here.
Yeah, right. So are you saying that if we can't use that money for right-of-way, we still want to keep those within the utilities because we've got other projects that we need to work on? Can you walk me through that? Because I was just thinking, you know, if solid waste doesn't have to contribute all that money to the right-of-way, maybe, are we charging too much for our rates or our...
And that's why we're doing a cost of service study.
So maybe walk me through that. And again, I'm trying to pay attention to make sure that we're not actually just changing the goalposts a little bit where, hey, well, we still have the money, we can spend it over here. I want to get clarity on, you know, is this one of those issues where we should have a discussion that we're charging too much now for rates? And I know there's a study coming back.
It, it's coming back in the next, in the next month, so...
But I think that might be influenced by some of, by the bigger picture of our needs and capital outlay and some of those ongoing discussions, too. So I guess for me, I'm just, I'm just point blank. Are we charging too much for rates? I guess this study will show that we might be...
Right. And I honestly don't have the answer to that question because we are still compiling the data with, with our consultant group that is doing the rate study. We've been on calls with them on a weekly basis, giving them updated numbers and getting those, all that data to them so they can do a correct and thorough analysis on whether or not we have the revenues to cover the now current expenses. Because our current expenses, yes, for solid waste are going to be decreased this year by 807 or 808,000 dollars, and next year by 921,000, but they are also going to be increasing due to the financing charges for the 7.8 million is what it ended up being. We're gonna be financing 7.1. So there's going to be payments because, because of that. And so there is, there's a lot of components that are being evaluated. That is kind of the, a topic that we are, we have on, on the calendar to discuss. Tonight, what we're looking at, focusing on is on the, on the right-of-way maintenance side of it, was that now that solid waste isn't paying that, and transit isn't paying that, right-of-way maintenance isn't receiving it. And so that means that it's, it's really good news for solid waste and transit, but it also means that we're going to be bringing in about 1.5, 1.6 million dollars less for our roads, and we were already struggling with our roads. So that, that is the short of this particular slide.
Sure. And I guess generally speaking, the reason I even bring this up is because we're talking about, you know, it's good news for solid waste, trans perhaps, looking for good news for our constituents as well. So part of that is, okay, are they still paying an elevated rate? Plus, we're talking about potentially raising taxes on our citizens as well. And I know it's part of this discussion, and it's, there's a lot of moving pieces, but again, this is a needle that I think we should thread accurately. And again, we've been pushed as a council, from staff, no offense, to really take a serious look at our utility rates over the last couple of years. We've been a little bit behind, we've had to catch up, we've had increased costs, a lot of moving pieces. So we, as a council, over time, have really elevated our rates quite a bit. A lot of that money was going towards the right-of-way maintenance that we don't necessarily have now. But the customer, the constituent, is ultimately going to pay this price. So again, I want us to get the best deal possible for, for our constituents.
And, and really, it comes down to, and we'll get more into this, is how are the customers paying? Are they paying through the utility rate because of the impacts of the trash vehicles on the roads, and therefore, utility is being charged and then passing that rate or that charge over to their customers? Or are, as we look at it, are they going, are we going to collect revenues for our streets in a different manner?
I think in a perfect world, it'd be nice if rates could go down, but services could go up. But that's not always the way that it works. I understand that. But again...
And, and that the state wouldn't send down unfunded mandates. That would also be fantastic.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, absolutely. Were there other questions at this point?
Nope.
Okay. So this is our, our summary of the revenue, and, and these are the different areas that we get funding sources from. We've got the local surface transportation program, our state gas tax. Measure A, which is part of, it's a countywide TUT. We've got the maintenance of effort contribution required by the state, that's from the general fund. And then here is the city row maintenance funds, and this is the new numbers here. They were going to go up, and now they have not. And road maintenance and rehabilitation account from SB 1. That's our gas tax.
Our maintenance of effort contribution, isn't it electric lighting, which is actually paid by the electric department, and street sweeping, which is paid for by solid waste? Our maintenance of effort contribution that we have for the matching components? You said they were general fund, but I don't believe they're...
I know it's a transfer from general fund, but Bob can speak to that a little bit more specifically. He, he's, he's the manager of the transfer every year?
No, the 832,000 covers engineering and streets, urban forestry, and we, that's the general fund portion, the rest of it is transferred from Measure A and gas tax. But we have to cover 832,000 out of the general fund, and that covers general fund costs, engineering, streets, urban forestry.
Sure. If I remember right, though, you had the LS-1 streetlight rate that you guys were using as part of a maintenance of effort.
That covers the maintenance of effort for Measure A, which is a much higher amount, and we can use the engineering, street sweeping for that. But the 832,000 is just the general fund portion for engineering, streets, urban forestry.
I thought urban forestry mostly is covered by Measure A. That was one of the arguments at SB CAG, is that the City of Lompoc uses such a great amount of Measure A, which a lot of other communities use towards asphalt, but we use for urban forestry.
No, we, we transfer from Measure A into general fund to cover things above the 832,000. So our, those three departments are far over 832,000. So we, it's, those are the primary components that we use for the 832,000.
I'm a little confused on the city row maintenance fund. I, I, that has a very similar name to what you just said was getting zeroed out.
It actually isn't being zeroed out. It is, instead of 3.4...
Gotcha.
It's now 1.7.
Got it. Thank you.
And then when we move on to what our expenditure needs are, this is to maintain our status quo. So this is maintaining our current PCI levels, and, and kind of that, that blue, I think it was a blue line, on that chart. And we can go back to that chart in a minute. But the total amount that's funded is here, and then the amounts that are unfunded is this lower part. And so you can see that our unfunded amount each year averages to approximately, I believe it is 1.45 million per year on average, that's unfunded. And that's to maintain our current status. I'm just pointing out here, like the street rehabilitation projects, that's what we're talking about tonight. This 3 million is the, is basically 1.5 million in fiscal year '25, '26, and 1.5 in '26, '27. We combine those and, and work on them every other year to take advantage of economies of scale. Here, the street rehabilitation programs now is showing that we are at minimum a million dollars underfunded. So what do we do about this? Or what can we do about this? I'm gonna bring up, oh, I skipped ahead. This is just a summary, that our roadway needs exceed our revenues. That was the 1.46 million that we would need to have for ongoing maintenance. And the, the spending 1.5 million a year will result in a gradual decline in the city's overall average PCI. That was back on the slide with the four lines. It was the second one from the bottom. If you'd like, I can go back to that slide and show you. But it is a gradual decline of the overall average PCI. If we wanted to move on to one of the, let me go back. If we wanted to move from this blue line, which is where we are right now, because without the additional row enterprise fund reimbursement, we would need to increase from the 1.5 million to a 3.5 million if we wanted to move up to this line per year. So now we go into some of our revenue options. Council, the mayor had asked us to bring back information on a special tax for the purposes of roads and, and roadway maintenance, the possibility of that. And so I'm going to bring up, I believe that Wing C. or, or Jim are going to be talking about the transaction use tax and what it is and so forth.
Good evening, council members. Jim Morris with Urban Futures, nice to be with you this evening. Been asked to present to you some considerations that you probably want to take into your thinking when considering whether a transaction use tax is appropriate for the community, and the opportunity to look at additional funding for your streets and roads. You're already familiar with this, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time talking about the basics of the TUT. You have one currently in place, but a little bit of review. It functions similar to the sales tax that the state imposes. Slight difference, sales tax is a tax on the sale or use of goods. A transaction use tax, slightly different in that it's only imposed within the district that is formed, that's the city's boundaries. And all of the goods that are purchased within the district, and they're used there or they're delivered into the district, those get that additional transaction and use tax on it. But largely, it's easiest to think about it as functionally similar to the sales tax. One of the opportunities is, is that there is a limit on how much of a local sales tax can be imposed. And so by electing to impose that transaction use tax for local purposes here in the City of Lompoc, that preserves your control over that. The county can impose a local sales tax, but that can be put to use for countywide purposes. We'll get into that a little more in the next slide. As a reminder, just like the state sales tax, there are exclusions in terms of what that transaction use tax is applied to. It excludes the necessities of life. It excludes the necessities of life. That's a term used by the state. It's most food products and medications, so those are excluded. Interesting kind of fact around this, of all of the sales that could be potentially taxed, those necessities of life account for about 56% of the total value. So when you think about what citizens are actually taxed on in terms of the sales, 50% of that's excluded as necessities of life, meant to provide some relief for those basic necessities. In terms of putting this on the ballot, the particular state statute that authorizes you to impose a transaction and use tax requires that there be a two-thirds vote of this council in order to put that on the ballot. That's for any ballot in terms of its timing. If you decide to put it on the ballot during a non-general election for the city, so for example, in June of next year, June of 2026, there's an additional requirement that you would have to have a unanimous vote of the council to declare a fiscal emergency in order to put it on that ballot. In comparison, if it's to be put on the November ballot, when there are council seats up for election, it's a general election of the city, it's just the two-thirds vote to put that on the, on the measure. No additional declaration of fiscal emergency. If the measure is for a general purpose, which means it can be put to any purpose within the city, then a 50% plus one vote requirement is required at the ballot by the citizens in order for that measure to pass. If it's for a special purpose, which means the actual ballot language restricts it to these defined purposes, it requires a two-thirds voter approval. In the chart there, you can see what the existing total sales tax, including transaction use taxes, is and where those funds go. There's the 6% that goes to the state. There's the 1 and 1/4%. It's the Bradley Burns local share that gets returned locally. And then there's the two additional transaction and use taxes you see there that account for 1.5%. Half of that, half percent goes to the county for their transportation needs. And then the 1% is here with your local TUT. It's a general purpose tax.
Jim, if I could just interrupt you to clarify one thing. The unanimous vote by the city council to put the measure on the ballot is only for if it were June 2026, and only if it were a general tax for general purposes. To put the, to put a special tax on June 2026, we'd just need a two-thirds vote of council. Just wanted to clarify that.
Appreciate that. Questions here before we move on?
Yeah, I have a couple. Just to repeat what you said, Jeff, of the two-thirds, if it was a special tax, would put it on the ballot. Is that, okay. So I heard, I believe I heard you say there's a 10% limit that they can charge, we can tax. Did I hear that correct?
No, there's a, there is a local limit on how much transaction use tax can be imposed in totality. It's, that's a 2% add-on to the state sales tax. So the maximum amount that can be charged locally, and we're going to see it on the next slide, is actually 9 and 1/4%. You're not there. You're currently at 8.75%. So there's a half a percent additional transaction use tax that you have the authority to put on the ballot.
Two points.
Right, and put to the voters for their approval.
So that's the maximum we could do?
The maximum you can under state law right now. And we'll pursue that.
If the county uses that, then we can't?
Yes. Once that, under current state law, once that transaction use tax is imposed by either, well, the city or the county, it's gone. And there's no more authority.
And what if you both have something on the June 26 ballot?
Yeah, great question. Conflicts of law question, which is, I'd put to your, your city attorney to answer that. But it presents a challenge in terms of what would happen if both are approved, I suppose.
What the rule is, is if that situation occurs, then the measure that gets the most votes is the one that is adopted.
So the county has a lot more people?
That is the uncertainty in the law. So I, it's never happened before, or never had to be decided by a court or a county or the state. But I believe that if that situation occurred, then what a court would do, it was, it would count how many, who got the most votes within the city limits of Lompoc. And that would be the measure that passes. But that has never been decided or even happened before.
Thank you.
Okay. You get some councilor? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was just, I was just playing that through. So I feel bad for the county, right? If they, if they can't jump on this and we get this passed, like, that's it. This, they can't come back next year and raise additional taxes. So for everyone out there, we can only add .5 to our tax.
For your citizens here, that's the total they can pay. The county could actually come back and impose one countywide. It just wouldn't be applicable here. Raises some fairness questions, and people in the rest of the county might be really frustrated by that.
So I'm just throwing this out there, that the county might have a somewhat of a, you know, if they're even considering this, they might have a little bit of stress considering that their decision might negatively impact the streets and law.
They can't even care about us.
Well, they should.
Be nice if they, if they thought about that. Okay.
Yeah.
To council member Bridges' point, here is our current rate at 8.75. We discussed 7 and 1/4 is that state sales tax, half a percent to the county's TUT, and then 1%. There is available, as you see, that half a percent that is out there under the state cap. That would put you at 9 and 1/4%. You can see how that lines up with your surrounding jurisdictions in the three-county area. It's on the higher side. You've got a couple of communities there that are at 9 and 1/4 now. City of Santa Barbara, City of Oxnard, and the City of Santa Paula. Put you at equivalency with them. As we talked about the county's competition, there's a bit of a sense of rush to the ballot box, if you will. Maybe, maybe not. We don't know what their plans are. I'm not aware of those. You may have more information on that than me. In terms of what's happened recently at the ballot box, you can see statewide. We thought it was helpful to see. These are for general purposes. And this is new and increased TUTs. They've had generally good outcomes in the last three elections cycles in terms of approval rates, passage rates. In terms of the numbers that have passed, that's not what the voting was. But we'll take a look at the next slide in terms of locally in this three-county area, what have been the results of transaction and use taxes going back to 2018. There's about 20 measures up there. And you can see the passage rate fairly strong. All of these, I would point out, have been for a general measure, so the threshold requirement is only 50% plus one. You can see those, several of them, including the cities in 2020, that did pass by a threshold that exceeded the two-thirds requirement for a special tax. But those, these are all general tax measures that were approved. Questions?
Councilor? So a quick question. I just have to bring your attention to the fine print there. Walk me through that asterisk.
Oh, yeah. These are, there's no special tax measures in this collection of 20 TUTs. These were all for general purposes.
So as a point of reference, we're being tasked with potentially considering a special tax or general tax. Is that fair?
You have two options. You can either put on the ballot as a general one or as a special.
We don't have a lot of precedent for special taxes passing. Is that fair?
Yeah, there are, they were asked of the voters, but there were four measures that did exceed that threshold over the past several cycles. Questions? Okay, just some benchmarks in terms of timeline. This is set up for the June 2026 ballot measure, for that election. And just a timeline of what you would need to do. Kind of requires some diligence here moving forward. In December, we typically make a recommendation, you know, some communities decide to do it, some don't, to conduct a bit of outreach to the community and do some public opinion research just to see in terms of the types of support there would be for the type of ballot language and the purposes for which that tax measure would be put. And to see what your thresholds are for how much the community support there is. Is there enough to get to that two-thirds, or is there only enough to get to that majority? You'd have to bring back, though, in January, the consideration to this council, because you have to put on the January 6 ballot or council meeting, and you'll see there in red, the direction to staff to actually prepare that ballot language and the required resolutions so that your city attorney can get to work quickly. Because at the next, very next meeting, got to bring back to you that first reading of that measure as an ordinance, second reading in February, and then you've got to get that to the registrar of voters. So it's a, it's a quick turnaround to get it on that June 26 ballot. If you wanted to go to November, obviously the time allows you a little more time should you want that for your purposes of considering here and maybe taking some, some input from the community.
Did I hear you correctly that the first two are not mandatory?
Well, yeah. I mean, nothing's, you can make that decision when you want. It's just if you need that information.
Are all the rest mandatory?
In terms of this timeline for June of 2026, certainly the red January 6 deadline of getting that ordinance done or getting that direction so that the ordinance can be on your January 20th and February 3rd, those are, those are hard deadlines for you. You can do them prior to that and move it up, but those are your final deadlines in order to make that submission to the registrar of voters.
Yeah, it's just the first two seem aggressive to me, meaningful.
It's tight. It can be done. We've seen it done. Good folks can get into their community, and there's some experts out there who can help you with that if you find that helpful. All right. Wincie, my colleague, I'm going to ask her to come up because we were also asked to discuss with you an option for looking at using these revenue source potentially to leverage some capital financing for your capital improvements.
Thank you, Jim. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. So just stepping into a hypothetical world for a moment here, just to demonstrate the use of this new potential revenue stream. You could, with this new revenue stream coming in estimated at around 3.75 million, dedicate or allocate that towards spending on capital projects or the row maintenance. Another option is to leverage that revenue stream with the issuance of municipal bonds so that you get more upfront proceeds. So to the extent that there are projects that are larger than, say, that 3.75 million year after year, you want a project, you want to implement a project that's 15 million, for example, you would issue municipal bonds and then pay debt service using the new revenue stream. Some benefits of issuing municipal bonds that other municipalities have looked at is that you are able to accelerate priority projects and avoid rising construction costs, which you've seen large rises in, in construction costs over the last few years. It also spreads the cost of the project across taxpayers that will benefit from the long life of the project. So those, again, that benefit from the project are paying into it. Also allows municipalities to consider a general purpose sales tax that can be used for any purpose, but you really are locking in the use of that revenue by issuing the bonds, getting those projects done, and then locking in the revenues to make debt service payments. Of course, on the flip side, disadvantage is that you are paying interest when you borrow money, very similar to a mortgage on a home. And you do lose some of that ongoing flexibility because, again, you've completed those projects and then you're paying ongoing debt service. So you lose some of that flexibility of the expenditure choices on the back end. Other considerations for financing is what is a city's capacity, timeline, and tolerance for implementation of projects? A lot of times, a community doesn't want multiple road projects happening at the same time due to traffic concerns. So and how much in financing provisions are needed? What is the goal and the projects, that total upfront proceeds that you would want to generate in one or several bond issuances? And here, we just give an example. A standard bond issuance for new money projects is 30 years, 30 years. But you can shorten the term of the financing. We've done financings that are 10 years, 15 years. And of course, the shorter the financing, the less total interest that you're paying. And then looking at prepayment options, a very standard municipal bond world, a 30-year bond, you are locked out of prepayment for 10 years. There's a call protection. But you can look at different prepayment options as short as one or two years out from the financing. So a common tool that is used in California, municipalities in California, is lease revenue bonds. These type of bonds are secured by legally available general fund revenues. But as we point out there on that leveraged bullet point, you can internally allocate or size the bond issuance to the new revenue stream. For example, with the new TUT measure that we just discussed. So just based on today's market, assuming a strongly rated municipality, 30-year lease revenue bonds, and that the city earmarks $950,000 annually for debt service payments, the city could generate approximately 15 million in upfront proceeds to spend on projects. And I can go into more detail on this type of bond issuance if interested.
Councilor?
Yeah, do you mind going back just one slide? For me, real quick. And again, I'm coming at this at just a pretty simple, basic level. So talk to me about 15 million bucks upfront. How much would it cost us over 30 years to pay that back?
So you would pay, again, these are a lot of estimates and assumptions going into that at $950,000 a year over 30 years.
Yeah. What does that equate to? So how much will we pay to get the 15 million? How much?
30 million.
Almost 30 million. Yeah, yeah. So, okay, cool. So understand that. So again, I guess what I would love, and I'm not sure who I might ask this, maybe of press, maybe of finance, but talk to me about our choices here. If we were hypothetically to get $15 million upfront, why is that better? And what could we accomplish in a different way that is better, more efficient, more effective than sustaining a couple million dollars every single year over time?
And before Steph answers that, I do want to say also that this is a tool and that this doesn't have to be decided upon, and it doesn't have to be decided upon even till after a measure that this passes.
And I'm not necessarily against debt. I just, I'm, I'm looking for, you know, this is a financing option. Maybe it helps us hit the gas a little bit. We can get some stuff done. But then, over time, we've got 30 years of payments that we have to make. What if we got the job done? What if something else pops up, inflation changes, and we're still stuck with the bill? So again, I'm, I'm looking for a little bit of direction or guidance from staff on what would $15 million upfront do?
So those are really good questions, and that, that is part of what needs to be deliberated. Maybe not tonight. The financing bond question is something that could be discussed down the line, but...
So let me, the reason I may push back on that is, is if we make a decision to even consider pursuing this, doesn't this lock in what we can or how flexible we might be with the funds that are raised? Is that fair? Is that what I'm reading into this? Meaning if we set up the bond in a certain way, we have to quote, "but lock in how the additional revenue will be spent."
Correct.
Is that accurate?
That is up to the, whatever the debt service payment is. It would lock that, that in. And, and there is, there's different viewpoints on whether or not it's worth the upfront or not. Doing it upfront or part of it upfront, say, 15 million over three, three years would be 5 million each year that we're investing and infusing into some of the repairs and, and projects that we, that the community has asked for. However, there is a cost. And, and that's really what this, the council and, and different perspectives is going to kind of suss out. Will construction costs go up? Will they not? I, I mean, I, I don't have a crystal ball. But I think it really comes down to how much we need an infusion or not. And if... And if we need to lock in and have an external mechanism. That locks what the, i- if it were a, not a special tax, it, it would have, it's another mechanism to lock that in.
And I guess this is, and I don't want to, you know, project too much about what I'm thinking, we still have to hear public comment. But I think you understand where I'm coming from is that one of the bigger decisions here is whether or not we have flexibility as a council over time. Three years, five years, 10 years into something. Do we need to shift the use of some of those funds to a priority that exists in the future? So I am very serious about learning what type of guardrails are we setting up? That yes, we got $5 million a year for three years, what happens in year seven? When all of the benefit of that has gone away, we have debt service that's going on, we're continuing to pay. But it's, it's a bigger bill and now we've lost our flexibility, our ability to pivot to a new, something that's blown up in our town that we've got to address. So again, this is why I'm asking some of these questions, so I understand how we're putting something together to put a tax onto our citizens. That's fair and efficient. So I think that's, I think that's where I'm coming from.
And I think that just to, to that point is that the, the special tax is actually, that is also putting in those guardrails. And so that's a really good consideration for, for a special tax.
Thank you.
Yeah, this example uses 950,000 of the potential 3.75 million. So there's many ways you can select, if you issue 10 million, it'd be even less than that.
Councilor Bridge.
Well, not going too deep in the bushes on this, but the bond this could be a good thing because in a petroleum friendly state like California. I'm sure the cost of petroleum is not going to go down. So you get what you can now at the good rate and pay it because petroleum is probably going to exceed the rate of the bond.
And that was my, one of my initial thoughts was, you know, oil's dropping at 60 right now. Bond rates at four, four and a half. If it would drop down to that two points where it was not too long ago, then it becomes very viable to do. As you know, it rotates around in California, asphalt's going to be an endangered species. You're going to be importing it from, to whatever, that was the thought process I had made in communicating this when I made this council request to discuss this.
And there's no pushback, I guess the question that I'm overly simplifying that, but this is where I want to learn like, okay, what if we did this arbitrary, this number? Do we go, is this, the fix is to go buy 15 million bucks worth of asphalt so that we lock in the commodity pricing that's lower? And that's a better investment over time. I don't understand where we might save on some costs.
So what, what's mentioning here is that we lock in a bond so that we have an obligation to pay. And then you do a general tax and hoping it passes. I think that's what you were talking about, right? Right? So the, the thing that's complicated there is if, if it passes and you got the general, you spend that amount. The complication is getting trust from the city. We did a sale, a sales tax and a lot of what was promised to the city didn't happen. So I think we have to be very careful about a general tax. And I think, I know we got more conversation coming down, but I did, I talked to a lot of people about the special tax. And if it went to go into something directly, there appears to be more trust with that. And what we're doing here, we were told before, because we tried to do this before about bonding. We were told six years ago, seven years ago, that if we did this, you kind of really are doing a special tax. Cause you're locking it into a debt service. So we were kind of told that we really couldn't do it that way and it was risky and we shouldn't. So it's kind of interesting how we've, six years later, we'd be told something differently.
So I don't necessarily disagree with any of that, I just think that ultimately, and again, this is very general. If the people want to maintain power within their city. It's their right to vote and elect folks to, to pursue a pathway forward for long walk. I will agree with you if we insist that we have some sort of public hearing and we get public input. I think it's one thing to say, I've talked to a lot of folks and they want us to fix the potholes and they want better streets. But I would like to, for them to learn a little bit of these details on how we're setting up financing. What is the cost going to be over time and what is the most efficient use of that? I do think there is an argument for A, a general tax, we need it to pass. B, again, council priorities shift, things change. I know we need our streets fixed, but we could have 10 years of perfect streets and have issues in public safety. We could have issues in other areas of our community where we may have the shiniest street. We've got 73 PCI, but we have a crime rate that goes up. So I'm not saying they're unrelated, but I, I think that we, as a council, there is an argument for having flexibility in using revenue that you collect. So from my point of view.
And that's, and that's why we put a limit on the last one. So I 2020 rolls off in nine more years. So that we, there is a breather and it has an opportunity to come back and previous council, next council can in nine years decide what they need to do with that revenue. So I mean, that's, that's why we, we put that limiter on there and so it had an opportunity to go back to another direction. So I think if we did anything that we did, we should have a ceiling on it so that we don't tie everybody's hands forever. And I agree, I think the 20 year limiter probably should be something that we could do. I think we could get our PCI where we are. I mean, one of the points that wasn't mentioned in there, and I think there's well over 50 blocks in town, they're at zeros. So I mean, you want to move your PCI up real fast, take these zeros and how would you like to be the guy stuck on the street with a zero? So I, I, I agree, there are alternatives, I know the bonding aspect, I think that we got a cart before the horse on that. I appreciate your conversation with that for sure, but.
And again, I'm curious about all of these functions and I'm not questioning or doubting any of them and they may be the best fit for us. But I, I hope I'm coming across where I need to know, like is this, is this just one of those things where you do it, you get the money and you hope it works out? Or is there some due diligence that you need to go through in setting this up? Because this is a big cost, this is an ongoing issue, streets have been flailing and failing here for some time. We raise the money and they stay the same, we fail. So I want to make sure that we figure out a way to.
Councilor Bridge.
Just, just a question here, is there any reason that we chose June and not November? Or was that just an example you threw out, this is the worst case scenario?
That was the earliest deadline you could do. We just put it on there, that was the earliest deadline that you could meet. That's the, the first available ballot that you could put this on, so we just set up the timeline there. But no, there's, you can choose June or November.
It's just kind of a short cram on a campaign to do something and, you know, just wondering.
Right, so you can kick all those back another, you know, four months.
One of the reasons why I asked for this, because if you see what's been going on in the county survey meetings, there is rumbles of trying to do this. So there's, there is a, and if you really want to have no control of the money, let the county get it, right?
About June it is.
Yeah, Councilor Bridge.
I might've missed the answer to this Christie, but if 56% of the goods sold in the town are taxable by this half a percent. How, how much do we raise?
So right now with our 1% TUT, we're bringing in about 7.5 million a year.
So we're talking about 3 million.
3.75 is what we are estimating.
So this, when we talked about that graph. The three point, yeah, I don't need to see it, I'm just, I've kind of got it memorized. The 2 million kind of started moving us at the level. So we could have a combination of what was.
It would put us, it would put us in between that, the top two lines.
Yeah, so let's just say we stayed at the 2 million to do the maintenance and that would leave. 1.75 million to service a, a bond. And I'm not sure what that number would be, but we could have a compromise here. Where we, we did a partial bond and took care of our maintenance and won both ways.
You, you would, we would work with, with streets on what the capacity is and, but that is, it, it, in, in many ways, we're getting the cart, the cart before the horse. This was a mechanism to, as Mayor's saying, to lock in the parameters of if we were, if we were to go the general route. But I think, I'm trying to hit.
Well, I thought the bond, what we were discussing of the bond was, so maybe I'm all wet here. But to me, what I was hearing is we go for a general. But we all know what we want to do and we tell the people we're going to do that. And we lock some of it up in a bond as soon as it passes and commit to use that for what the election was for. But we don't need to get two thirds and that allows the present council to kind of meet their promise. And still have some flexibility. I, and there's no reason we couldn't take that approach, right Jeff? We could have the general and then lock the bond in afterwards, right?
We can do a general and lock the bond in afterwards, but we would need to be extremely careful. While the measure is on the ballot and during the campaign season, that we cannot say that we are going to do a bond measure. Because in order for us to maintain that 50% ballot threshold. All of the educational and informational materials we put out must say that the money can be used for any government purpose.
Okay, so it's a marketing issue. Okay, thank you very much.
So really tonight, what we are hoping to do is get some direction from council on one, what we've already started. The discussion and benefits and drawbacks of a potential ballot measure, whether that would be just the various components. Does the majority of council want to consider such a ballot measure? I think that that's really our first question. And if they do, do you want to pursue a public opinion research option? So we can get a gauge on where the community is. That, that research and survey could include discussions on, or evaluation on primary versus general election. And the voter turnout and the makeup of, of the voter pool at that time. It could include evaluation on what kind of support there is for, for a measure. And then to discuss tonight, the, if we want to go, look at a June, it, then we need to get moving on it. Or do we want to consider a November 26th? Or do we want to wait until we hit a survey results and make that decision at that time? And finally, as we often ask, is there any alternate direction?
Well, the only.
Hold on, let me get Councilor Bridge. He beat you on the leg.
Oh, I thought, I thought Steve Bridge was going to go in front of me. Sorry.
So anyway, I think for the council, as we notice with economic times and streets and roads and everything, we want to maintain everything. But as politicians, I think we're just a little bit too easy to actually be in, in favor of a tax. Without actually doing the survey, without knowing what the public really wants. Because you know, we're up here acting like we know what everything is. You mentioned Councilmember Ball, what about the public? What would they like to do? What would he do? So it would make sense to do a survey, in my opinion, if we really wanted to respect the, the public who actually we're representing. Before we move forward, we're, a, a lot of your questions are really good and I'm just going to mention you because you asked some good questions. As far as whether it's a bond measure or a general tax or whatever. I think we should let the public decide what would they be in favor of. If it's a special assessment or if it's for streets and roads. I think we know what happens when we put a general tax in, it doesn't go where you want. And then what happens with the fee increases regardless of solid waste, cutbacks and leniency. We want the roads to be good, but why don't we let the public decide before we make a decision? You know, we're over here making this decision and it's, there, there's hard economic times and maybe they won't last, maybe they will. We don't know that, okay? We just went through government shutdowns, we went through all this. I'm not sure that it's real popular at this time without asking the people that are actually going to pay for it. Even though they say with the sales tax, it's not going to come from the residents. But that's kind of my opinion, I think that we should get that survey done ahead of time. And then have this discussion to find out where we're going to go, you know, or I think that would be just respectful, my, my, my personal opinion, so.
Councilor Ball.
All right, just real quick, so I mean, I definitely agree, I think anytime that we can engage the public and not just ask them, do they want their streets fixed? But ask them, hey, do you want your streets fixed and here's what it's going to take to do that, I think that's important. One other question that's kind of related to this, but it's just in the spirit of taxation. Our cannabis tax, is it staying level or is it slightly going down? I understand it maybe going down a little bit the last year or two.
More recently, it's been going down. I haven't looked at it in the last couple of months to see if it's continuing to go down or if it's stabilizing.
But it's generally depleted some percentage from its height.
We, we are not in the heyday of COVID.
Follow up question to that, when that number goes down, what entities are impacted within our city?
That general, that impacts the general fund.
Now from your understanding with the general fund with that, what have, what's the main, what's the big ones in the general fund?
Public safety.
Public safety.
And parts of that.
So again, I guess my push here is that as we have other taxes, say cannabis taxes is starting to go down. We don't have as much resources at the same level to push towards public safety to maintain something, sustain something. Again, that's one other reason why I have an argument for a general tax as much as possible so that we can maintain that flexibility. So that as costs pop up and go down in different areas, that we can address that. And again, the cannabis thing, it was great, it really helped us rebuild and.
Still is.
And it's still a big, we need it for sure, but it's not quite as much as it used to be. So just keeping the idea of taxation and revenue sources in mind, we should consider what's going up and what's going down too. Just a thought.
Councilor Bridge.
So this question's for Jeff. If we go out for a survey and we ask whether people want to have a tax on streets. Are, are we then locked in, it has to be a special?
No, we would just be getting information at that point.
Okay, I don't know if it's possible, could you put the milestone chart back up?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Could you put the milestone chart back up, the gentleman, I forgot his name. I, in principle, I agree with everything you guys have said regarding the survey. But we're in the middle of November now. Thanksgiving's going to hit next, Christmas is going to hit in the middle of December. To give me a meaningful step one and two complete, I'm going to guess it's going to cost 50 grand. And I just, I'm not real sure we're going to get a reasonable answer in that timeframe. So that, if we drive to that, then you're really driving to a November election. In my never to be humble opinion. So just as we're deciding that, think about that a little bit. Because I feel like what we're faced with is we have a known on the table that, and I've heard no alternatives, maybe. That's my fault for not asking, but we're facing a 1.5, 1.7, 2 million dollar shortfall in streets that are already in trouble. And if we don't do something, it, next year's going to be pretty ugly. And if the county corrodes in here and passes the tap.
You got.
We have absolutely no flexibility after that. So I just want to make sure we're all kind of, there's a lot of charts, we've talked about a lot of topics. But we can't lose sight of what the real river on the road is not to.
I do think that the input that we've received from Wing C, if they, if she'd like to address this specifically. Is that we would be able to, it'd be tight to get the community input in December. We have a list of, of potential vendors that we could get, do, get requests for quotes or qualifications in. I don't know if, if you have more information on how fast, how long it takes.
I have no doubt they can pull the logistics on it. I just have a lot of doubt that the community is really going to give us meaningful data in the middle of the holiday season.
Okay, got it.
That's, so I think we're going to get, need your reaction. It's kind of like when you say we're going to have a community outreach meeting in a big room. Two kinds of people come, it's either lucky losers that don't have a clue or people who are against it. Cause they're the ones that come and so I'm not opposed to it, I just want to be reasonable.
Yeah, I want you to explain a big thing.
So yes, just given the holidays, it is a tight timeframe. If this timeline is something that the council wants to explore, we could assist in contacting some of these firms. So it isn't a community survey where it's self-selection. They actually look and break down the demographic of the voters of the city. And then they'll give you, here's the confidence interval level. give you, here's the confidence interval level if we surveyed this percentage of the voters, right? So the more that you survey, the higher the cost, but the stronger the results. So they are making sure, it's not just who responds, they have to reach that same demographic so that they can give you confidence in the results of the survey. So it's different than a community survey where people are coming out and volunteering, excuse me, dry throat, where they're coming out and volunteering the answers themselves. And they will come in and again, present you the different options you can select. Okay, well, we're okay with the lower confidence interval level and that will be obviously quicker as well.
Yeah, I wasn't, I sure don't want to come across as criticism. I just don't have a lot of faith in polls and a poll that's done in 30 days, I have even less confidence in it. So, but I'm not criticizing your capabilities to get it done.
So do you have any more questions before we bring in public comment?
Just real quick, piggyback, I actually agree, and hear me out on this, it is a tight timeline, but a lot of us could be gathering community input and engaging and getting opinions from people. We can do a lot of that stuff. So maybe if staff feels like with the time, it is what it is, we can get as much as we can, figure out our options. I think it's still helpful, but however we get it, we definitely need to get community input. Because my fear would be, we didn't talk to the public, we didn't really try, we didn't really engage with them. We show up here on January 6th, a couple days later, there is the newspaper article, well, council in the quiet of the night, the first part of January passes a new tax. So again, we should engage, even if it's a tight timeline, with our citizens, they're the ones who have to pay for this in some regard, so. However we do that. Second point, I'm in full favor of us getting this done as quickly as possible. Full stop.
What was that?
Full stop.
So without a question, are you ready to deliberate?
I'm just saying, that's my...
Okay, okay. Let me open for public comment.
Okay.
Going through the formality before we start deliberating some more. Anybody else up for public comment? See, nobody come for public comment? We'll close public comment, bring back to the council. So I'm the one who brought this up as a council request. I am the guy who's against the tax component massively. The reason why I went with I-2020 because we had the opportunity to save the people over $20 million for your financing, a $95 million pension obligation to a 15-year payoff. We were able to get that locked in. There were a lot of other promises that were made in that ballot that didn't happen to come through, and that's why I wouldn't support a general fund. And you can see, if you want to go back to the amortization tables, I just happen to have them on my phone that I still have here on what we did, you know? And how much money we saved the people and how much the increase was. The complexity of the matter is, nobody advocates for asphalt or our sidewalks. So you just heard about the PCI for asphalt. You didn't hear about our storm drain aspect, you didn't hear about our gutters and curbs and sidewalks. That's on top of all of that PCI number. We keep watching this PCI every year drop. And you worried about property tax? If you can't get to your home and you're one of these streets that says zero, you destroyed their property value. And we have a lot of streets where there's weeds growing in the cracks, because there's more cracks than there is streets. And again, if you go out and put this for a poll, okay, we can hear from the public. I hear from the public all the time. But you're gonna have groups that come up and say, oh, we need another park, we need another... We went through that. I don't know, in the way they skewed the question, there was a very skewed poll that was out there. And you know how you can pull things, you're a marketing man, you know you can make it go, but who's gonna be advocating for asphalt? Unless you go to a CalCog event, nobody's out there, and that's the problem. We just keep going. For 10 years, we've been, I've been up here watching our PCI drop. And at a 54 average, I mean, there are a lot of zeros out there. I went through the map, I think there's 54 blocks of zeros in town. You're a realtor, you understand what that does if the people get there and there's more potholes or, let's go look at South 8th Street. Have you seen how bad that is? I don't know how the people even parked their vehicles under the great Italian Cypress. But it's just not cute and fashionable to advocate for asphalt. You could advocate for a building, a community building that you get your name on a plaque or a swimming pool and you get a name on your plaque. But this is one of the reasons why we are in complicated times, because we have a swimming pool that we have to kick down an extra million a year out of general fund. We have a community senior center development building that we are continually kicking down more monies for. 10 million for that one, 20, 15 million for the other. I mean, there's $45 million right there on two big buildings, they're great. They're easy to sell. The hard work is to sell something that you don't think anybody wants. And that's the complication of it. You could put a poll out, but nobody's gonna say, yeah, asphalt. Right? Nobody's gonna say, yeah, sidewalks. They're not. But it's honest to do the hard job, to do the hard work of the things that aren't so fashionable. It wasn't fashionable for us to sell the sales tax, to say we're gonna pay off a $95 million unfunded pension obligation. People are like, what the hell's that? But when I told them you're gonna save $22 million and I'm gonna lock it in, and we were able to lock it in, of course, what did the next council try to do? They tried to unwind that and put it in a 30-year bond to get more money and to undo what we had locked in with a reset, so they could have another 500,000 a year. I didn't think we qualified to reach out and bond that. And if I think we're maybe a double B at best, maybe, or I don't know, depends on where you look, I wouldn't bond the city. We've got some, we're in a lot better shape than we were, but really, when you watch the curve, the state took us from a B to a C. I don't know where we are now, but we're dropping. And a lot of it's because we had some significant ARPA money, so they saw the ARPA here, they saw us there, and then they saw us, I think we end up this year 850,000 revenue over expenses in our general fund. That's good. But we do have some of our utilities are sucking some bill's water right now. So we have some complicated decisions. We were elected to be here to make the tough decision for the people. And as representatives, doesn't mean we send everything out to the public for a poll and a decision. And again, who the heck is gonna cheer for asphalt? Would you do it for me?
So I'm glad you burnt that up, if I may respond. I think you actually have a council, you have five people up here that, again, none of us are arguing about asphalt. I think we're all in favor, we all realize that asphalt needs to be addressed, even though it's not the shiniest topic to talk about. I think the only unknown for me at the moment, I'm all in, let's fix our streets. I just want to know, are we trying to set up a system where we make the assumption that we know what's best and we lock something in specifically because we think a certain way? Or do we keep it flexible for future councils to make adjustments? For me, I think that 10 years from now, there's no way to know if the wisest decision is locking in 10 years of street improvements. I just don't...
I think what would happen in 10 years from now, again, I-2020 would come up on a nine, you have another one cent that the people at that time could make their decision on. And I think that was the important part by Wes putting it in a 15-year cycle, that we didn't tie future councils' hands all the way down the line. And my recommendation would be this, because we know where, where is it, $72 million, right? Is our current number that we need to hit to bring our PCI up? Craig, wasn't that? Come on, cheer for me.
Using conventional methods, that's the number in the staff report, I believe.
$72 million behind on that. That's our second largest obligation to the unfunded pension obligation, is we have an unfunded asphalt obligation of $72 million. Oh yeah, that bond's almost crawling off, that one's not too bad, that 105.
So again, this is where I want to take this seriously, because it's $72 million to something unfunded, and I know these are all hypothetical numbers, we're talking about a 30-year bond on a $15 million, 15 to 72. Look, I know we'll have more money coming in there, but again, are we making leaps and leaps and...
Don't talk about the bond, that's way overcomplicated, that shouldn't have...
They brought it up.
We get in trouble, you heard that the city attorney said, we should probably not even be talking about that.
So I'm confused, you guys are...
Let's see, hold on, hold on.
Two items together.
Huh?
You're talking two items together and I don't...
Let me get Councilmember Vega, then I'll come back to you. Did I get it, Tim? I just called you. It's you, it's you. I understand the asphalt part of it and I agree with you that the streets are important. All I'm saying is as representatives, we still need to ask the public. I know you think the public's opinion isn't important because it's a horse race between the county. I always want us to be respectful to who elected us. I understand the complexities of asphalt and the deficiencies in our budget, as usual. I just don't advocate for a quick tax. Politicians are always ready for a tax, you know? They're always ready for a tax. You guys think everybody wants asphalt. Are you, Mr. Mayor, are you aware of the economic times right now that people are going through? Or are you in a different tax bracket where you don't feel the sensitivity of what's happening over there with rates and increased rates and deficiencies and solid waste and doing another fee structure that's going to ask for another increase? I mean, where are people gonna get this? I think you do understand, because I know that you are sensitive to the needs of others, especially the homeless and the helpless and everything else. So basically, that's where I'm coming from. You know, it's not a disrespectful thing, I get it. But I'm just, I just think the timing's gonna be with the way the old school bond went previously. You know, I think the timing's wrong. That's the only thing I wanted to mention. I just don't think it's there, the support for an additional tax. It may be good and you guys can vote in to go put it on the ballot, but I think all the huffing and puffing up here is not gonna be the majority. And I caution you, if you guys are gonna keep going in politics, it's gonna be held against you if we don't do it correctly.
Councilmember Bridge.
Well, I can understand wanting to do a survey. I think you've really got a resolve. I get the general feeling that we're all kind of saying, yeah, we gotta do this. But then the big argument becomes, is it a general or is it a special? And I would feel very uncomfortable if we go out with a survey that leads people to believe that we're going to dedicate the money to roads, for example, and then we put a general fund ballot and issue a bond. That would make me feel uncomfortable. And I did not hear what the price of this survey's gonna cost. But if the majority of the council wishes to put a tax on or go for a June tax, then I might propose that you can call it a survey, but really, it's an outreach based on whether we're going for special or general. And if we went back to that milestone chart, instead of trying to get it done so quickly, we could move into early January and have all the feedback in the world. But I hate to ask people a question if I'm not gonna listen to them. And if we feel we need to do this, because we were elected to make the tough decisions, if we feel that, then, you know, what if the survey comes back, which it very likely could, without proper marketing, that, no, I don't want a tax? So we get 65% of the people come back, say, tax for roads? I don't want that. And everybody up here says, well, if we don't do that, we're not gonna have roads. You know, is our answer, well, we'll just not do it because the poll said no? We're not willing to take the, you know, don't ask the question if you're not willing to accept the answer. So that would be my only position. And based on everything I've heard, I don't see that we have another way out. And I personally would say, start marketing and, you know, bite the bullet and say, we're gonna put it on the June ballot.
Councilmember Ball.
So I just think, going back to measure I, I do think if the council will remain flexible with a couple of the thoughts that I have on this, it does take council marketing, measure I. Look, you and I didn't see eye to eye on anything at the time, for sure, except for the tax. You sacrificed a lot of what you were about at the time.
I had to pay rent to rent this place here to actually hold a discussion. Only could ever do that.
I can be helpful, I'm willing to take the hit. If somebody says, I don't like taxes, why are you pushing taxes? I'm willing to say, look, this is the methodology, this is the only option that we might have to address this issue. It's not, no one likes to talk about taxes, but I'm willing to take the hit and to help market this. I just want council to commit to at least having a discussion in front of the public about how this gets put together. So that's probably the January 6th date, maybe that's the date we get a ton of, fill up the room, get a ton of public feedback. Let's figure out, are they for a tax? How is it gonna come together? Special tax, 66% to pass, I think. General tax, easier to pass, maybe one makes more sense in June. I don't know, but let's at least get some public feedback.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, I'll just throw in, you guys are forgetting about the enterprise reimbursement aspect of it, because there's going to be a million plus in each of these two accounts that's gonna remain for that account. So remember that aspect of it too.
I didn't understand what you said. Could you, sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said, please.
Enterprise, or the right-of-way maintenance is not being deducted out of the enterprise funds now, transit and solid waste. So those will remain in that account. They're not coming to the general fund now, they're staying in the enterprise. So when you look at transit, okay, a bad example, we'll look at trash. They're not taking the million, 1. whatever million out of that enterprise fund now, it's staying in that fund. So when she's talking about doing a cost of service, that will be absorbed into the fund as part of the cost and not a cost going out of the fund.
I think what he's getting at is there might be actually a rate reduction that comes back in some of these utilities, and I think there's a couple of court cases that are still going forward on ROW. And I think electric is probably the next one maybe to fall, because the majority of electric actually doesn't go underground, it goes overground, and it actually goes over sidewalks, not over streets. So there are actually a couple other lawsuits that are coming up.
I'm a cynic, I don't believe rates are ever coming down, so.
What's that?
I'm a cynic. I don't believe after all's said and done, the rates will end up coming down. They may not go up as quick.
We did it before. We did it. We did it, we actually said no to wastewater rates here recently, a 17.1% increase and we also, years ago, we had a 3% reduction in electric rate that we carried through, because at that time, we had $22 million. All right, so, I mean, you hear, Councilmember Vega wants to, and we need to be very much aligned, I don't generally support a tax. I do support something because we have to do something with the asphalt. In the old days, our fuel tax covered it. Unfortunately, a lot of our fuel tax does not go towards asphalt anymore. Most of it goes to transit and other items. In fact, a lot of our money is going to that. Yeah, well, so anyhow, my general idea was a specific tax in June for the asphalt sidewalks and drainage lines, right? And we were needing as well, that we have really like no money. Please come up here. We have like no money for stormwater, right?
Correct. Our storm drain infrastructure has no dedicated funding source other than our road funds, so that's, whenever we need to fix a storm drain or expand or anything, that's what we do. The county does have a property tax that they use for drainage, but it's not under our control. It's, they periodically do small projects for us and after that, we own and maintain them. But we have no revenue stream to own and maintain them. And then there are some other components up there, we listed on some of those tables for needs that are either unfunded or inadequately funded, like future capacity improvements that aren't a direct mitigation or direct result of a single development project or... What's the other one? Anyway, there's a number of them.
Let's see if we can get to these first three items, I don't know if I can get further to hypotheticals. Does anybody got any... Hold on, let me see if anybody else has...
Give him a motion.
Wanted to say anything. Any else?
So, maybe just clarify for you guys going to the motion. Do you... Are you guys hoping... Are you guys hoping to get consensus tonight on whether it should be a special or a general? Or is there...
Why don't you hear my motion?
Well, or maybe just hear me out. Are you... Can we commit to... Before you make a motion, can we commit to the June timeline? And then agree to hash it out in the January 6th meeting? Or is there a timeline requirement for us to decide that sooner than later?
So, my motion would be that we approve going out for a survey immediately, gather some data from the public. That will satisfy Councilman Vega. I think it'll satisfy a year level. I'd be happy. We just can't waste any time. Then we can come back after the survey and make a decision. That'll give us a month. If we start now and they can get the survey done in 45 days, we'll come back with January, which is the milestone, I believe I saw. And we can make a decision. That's my motion.
We've got a Bridge Ball motion in a second? That answer your question, Councilmember Vega? Like, that's what you're asking for? You guys ready to vote? Go ahead.
No, it's okay, go ahead.
You wanna vote? All right, go ahead, vote. I tried, man. You can vote now. All right, here you go, that's a 5-0. All right. Written communications, any written communications?
No, nothing.
Oral communications, your last two minutes. Advertise your YouTube channel or whatever. What was it?
I'm gonna specifically not do that. I'm... I support you and thank you for pushing back on the bad data, the airport data. I attended the Santa Barbara County Board of Supervisors meeting today. And I believe that the very liberal control that the county has over our development here in this valley is actually tenuous. The county's in trouble because all their reserves are gone after their 90 ambulance debacle and the $11 million payout they had to make from their general fund to AMR ambulances and other mistakes that they have made. So, now they're scrambling. We really, really need to focus on what they are doing to us with SB CAG and LAFCO and this land trust easement crud with Campbell. Because I believe that the control they're exerting is actually very unstable. We need stability. We need the property taxes from this valley staying here. And we need representation. And that's what they're controlling us against. We need to take back our power. Thank you.
Anybody else? You guys flew all the way here, you have no... Come on. How much fun you had here today? All right, nobody else rise and we'll close all communications, bring about the council comments and meeting reports? Councilman Ball?
Just wanted, it was an honor to attend the Veterans Day ceremony. Great to see Councilmember Vega and Mayor Mosby there. Great turnout, great day, glad it wasn't raining. Beautiful.
Councilmember Starbuck?
No reports.
Councilmember Vega?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Ball and Mayor Mosby. It was a great ceremony for the veterans. The veterans were more of a... I was very proud to be there. As far as the public's concerned, I want you guys to know I respect all of our debates and our decisions going back and forth. It's kinda strong, it's... But it's productive, and I think it's good for the public. You know, that they see us trying to make a good decision in the midst of so many needs. There's always so many needs, okay? And I know they wanna feel some benefit to it. And I don't like the streets either, but I'm not an advocate for taxation without finding out what's going on, okay? I'm just not. I just never have been, and I never will be. As far as unless somebody can actually justify the general tax, in my opinion, it's just allowing somebody to spend money somewhere where there may not be needs. You know, where we have too much trust. Again, you guys brought up the fact that as council members, we have to make the tough decisions. We'll make a tough decision, okay? And direct the money. Don't just leave it out there to let somebody else do it, and then you act like you did all this and all that. You know, I don't respect that. I've seen it for too many years now. And if you guys have that much trust, and you guys haven't been on council long enough, but I wanna thank the public, okay? And I'm rooting for you guys, the residents of Long Book. And I understand the economic hardships that are going on right now. And I believe everybody here, including staff, is trying to do the right thing. But you're right, it's our decision. And I'm gonna stick by it, and you guys, I hope you guys will too. Thank you.
Councilman Bridge?
I wanted to start by encouraging everybody to go to the library and raffle the trees off. They're all neat trees. You can kinda guess which one came from my family, because it's probably the shadiest. I'd like to have Brian take some action on this list that gets presented. I'm showing it to you so you know what I'm talking about. I know Jeff knows what I'm talking about, right? Okay, so, the transportation services. I'd like to see that come back no later than January. Councilman Vega put that on back in August. We've had numerous community members come and ask for that service. So, I think it's time we address that. And then we have the Sphere of Influence, which is a TBD. I'm not sure if there's a date due on the letter that we're asking to be sent in. But what I would like to come back on 12-2 is the list of the geographic areas that we're going to have on the list. So, we don't get the letter here a week before the deadline, and they've not consolidated what the list is. Because I know, for example, Mayor Mosby and myself have disagreements on what should be on that list. So, before staff does a bunch of work justifying Megalita Canyon, let's say, and then they come back to the council and council says, "Well, we don't want Megalita Canyon on there." "I just would like to avoid that duplicate work." So, I'm not asking the Sphere of Influence letters or findings to LAFCO get done, but I am asking that what properties we're saying are gonna be on there come back 12-2. Okay? Did you understand that, Jeff? Because I know Brian's kinda new at this.
I understood the request, yes.
All right. Yeah, those were the two I'd like to see. I might need council concurrence on...
And Councilmember Bridge, just so I'm clear and the public's clear, you're talking about the future agenda list, correct?
I am, it's scheduled TBD right now, and I know there...
Yes, okay.
In my mind, there's some implied deadline. And it's where we would go to LAFCO and say...
Specifically, you're talking right now, Sphere of Influence?
I just want the list brought forward, not the whole of the work.
Okay, thank you.
I got one concurrence to...
I'll give you a head nod, too.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you guys bear with me, I have a couple items here, I think, that we've glossed and talked upon, but I'd like to try to get some good currents. I've been asking for these questions, and I think they're important for the people in the valley. And one is the SoCal Gas franchise agreement. You guys have heard that there's electrification potential conversion in there. I've asked for review to let us know if what's going on. And I still don't know anything. So, I think it's something that needs to be presented to us. We have, I don't know what it is, several hundred residents are being forced with this electrification, and we have a SoCal Gas franchise agreement? Let's see if we're in violation, what's going on? Can we help these people, maybe if they don't want it? So... But I haven't been able to get the answer. So, if I can get two other people to help us get the answer. All right, I got... I'll call them out. Councilmember Ball, I got a thumbs up. Councilmember Starbuck and Councilmember Bridge. Councilmember Vega, I got all of us. So... There's another question I've had. I know staff is working on it, but I think it's important. We did a $700,000 funding for the wastewater gates at the wastewater plant. And I made the question at that time, are partners... Are our partners aware of what we're doing? Meaning the village and the Air Force Base. And I would like that to be able to come back to us so there's discussion from the city manager, city attorney, and saying, "Yes, this is what's going on. We're spending $700,000, and these guys are gonna give us $280,000." "We agreed to spend the $700,000, but we don't know if our partners are agreeing to reimburse us." So, I've kind of asked the question, I've been asking for a little while, but I'd like to know if we could get a... It doesn't need a staff report on these things. So, if it could come back, so that the rest of us will all know about what's going on with our wastewater contract, you know? So, if I can get two other people to accept that one?
Yeah, do you have a due date on that?
Well, we need to be sooner than later. Within the next two months. How about that? Is that work?
By February?
I think that would be good. So, I got, Councilmember Bridge, is it worth that?
February.
Any else? Councilmember Starbuck?
Resiliency type thing, is that what it is, or something different?
It's a utility share with the village and...
Same thing.
Yeah, something like that.
So, I'm on the same page, okay, got you, man. Yeah, we should hold them accountable, instead of letting them have free lunch.
So, another something that came up that I'm questioning about what we've got going on, and I understand, but I think the council should know this as well, is reading this 488-page LAFCO documents in front of us, which I suggest to all of you guys, because we have until first week of December to make comments on this, one of the most crucial documents that we've got in front of us.
Two weeks.
Yeah. So, there's actually one section in the middle, page 352 to 388. It references Long Book, 80 pages at the beginning of that. I made some comments on it. My suggestion is the rest of you guys take a look at it. And if you wish to make some comments on that about what's Long Book, I found probably 100 statements in there that were questionable or quasi-questionable statements that weren't aligning. One of them that I've asked for, but I think that we should know in this document, and it's another one I'm asking that within the next two months comes back to us. And allegedly, we have a trash agreement with the county. Allegedly, I say that because it's in this LAFCO document. And it says we have a trash agreement with the county to take Marburg's trash to our landfill. So, that's the village and Mesaokes and Mission Hills. So, I think us as a council should understand if this is out there. So, can I get three other people that we can find out something about this? So, Councilmember Ball, it's worth you, I have a thumbs up.
Well, that was kinda broad. Are you asking us to give comments back to you by the...
No, no, no. I just made that suggestion to you guys about the comments. I asked about the trash.
Okay, you just wanted to know about the trash.
I wanted to know about the trash, but I just made... That was the other part, to make a recommendation that you guys... Because that's one of my council comments here, not a request, but you guys check out this document and... Can the city attorney provide the link or city manager? Acting city manager, get the link to the document I'm talking about to them out of the LAFCO? Business item number one and number two of it?
I'm sure we can. I mean, that would be a planning department document.
Well, somebody give it to them. I don't wanna... I can't do it, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Is there a name of the document?
Off the top of my head, it's a 488-page nightmare. It's business item number one, MCI or something they call it, I forget what it all is, but I can get you the name of it.
I'm gonna Google it, so, see if I can find it.
Yeah, wait till you read it, you're gonna have so much fun.
What'd you say, page 300-something?
352 to 388, I think it is.
When we have comments, where do we send them? Do we send them to city attorney? What do those comments go?
I...
No, they would go to the...
Planning staff?
Community Development Department, planning staff.
Mario, he's ready to read them. Okay, so, the last thing I've got on there, and thanks you guys for bearing with me, is I understand Assembly Bill 253 is out there, and it's a self-certification document for developments, but I think that one itself was 10 units or less or something like that. But I'd like ability to come back with us. We have projects coming forward, and I know... I believe what it said is if a project was taken longer than 30 days for permitting, you're allowed to go out and get self-certified. Paraphrasing. But that's why I'm asking for this to come back to us. City attorney could come back to us and give us a presentation of what's going on so that we could possibly make sure that we're aligning with it, and we might wanna enhance it.
A presentation on AB 253?
Correct.
That recent bill that was adopted?
Yes, in October. Yes, make sure we're aligning with that. You guys gave us a whole stack of things, but you missed that one.
Is that gonna be a staff report on that one?
Well, it's gonna be a staff report with possible action. I mean, but we can always bring it back after you guys get it, as we all get educated with it. But it could be something of importance. I know some of the projects are being allowed to go self-certify, but it's helping to expedite because our little department could get overwhelmed real easily. So, can I get three head nods with that? I got a thumbs up for...
Two thumbs up, I'd love to learn more. I've heard about this for a couple of years, so, yes.
All right, all right. And Councilmember Starbuck, there you go.
I have one quick question before you close this out. Is the live streaming off? Do we know that? Because I'm getting texts that say, "Live stream's off." And I noticed we don't ask for phone calls from...
We stopped that a while ago, we're gonna have to start it again, though.
Oh, okay. All right, well, I just got a couple texts that the live stream's off.
Does anybody know if live stream's off? Somebody knock on the door? Hello? I don't know, there's not much we can do about it.
Mayor?
Yes?
I think you were trying to make a request, something about the agreement that the city has with the county about solid waste, and you wanted an informational report or item about that alleged agreement. But I don't think... If you were making a request about that, I don't know if we ever got the three votes.
Did I get any head nods? We got the Councilman Bridge, Ball, Starbuck.
But I never heard a due date.
Me too.
You never heard a due date, and I'm learning if we don't...
Well, I think it's critical, give me a two-month turnaround on that. It doesn't need to be a lengthy...
February again.
Yeah, I'm gonna see if it exists. It's a statement made by LAFCO, "I have never heard about this contract with the county for Marburg." Staff hasn't heard about this, but I think we should know, right? Well, they're coming up, that was one of their concerns. And we actually, if you read a certain resolution, it says, "We charge two times rate for refuse picked up in the county," which might not be happening. So, I'm just inquiring minds want to know. Anyhow, with that...
I have one thing...
Oh, you got something else, yes, I'm sorry. Councilmember Vega?
No, 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 I just was wondering if I could make a council request.
Sure, go ahead, you're welcome.
It's come to my attention through several people that, on the weekends, at the landfill, that people that have a double-axle trailer are not allowed to dump their trailer on Saturdays or Sundays. I would like staff to come back and tell us why and with possible action to find out what the policy change is and why there's a staff shortage, if anything, so that we can address that. So, you can do it Monday through Friday, but you can't do it on Saturday and Sunday, is what I was told. They are turning people away. So, if we guys could do that, I'd love to get three people to bring that back, because...
A thumbs up by Councilmember Bridge, a thumbs up by the mayor, a thumbs up by all of them, you got a 5-0 on that one. You want it back in what, two months?
Yeah, as soon as we can.
Good. There we go, two months or sooner. How about that? Anybody else? Before the party's over. All right, we'll adjourn this meeting to regular meeting, 6:30 PM, December 2nd. Alright, we'll adjourn this meeting to regular meeting, 6:30 PM, December 2nd.